Welcome, everybody, to our Budget Works Session. It's rainy out there, so we're all thinking about growing things in nature, so we have to do DPR right now. So, anyway, welcome. We'll start with our Department of Parks and Rec, and I'll turn it over to you, Mark, to get us started.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. With me today is Jane Rudolph, the Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm going to turn it over to her for presentation and for introductions.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for having me here this afternoon. Before I start, I'd like to introduce the DPR staff that has joined me here today. I'm joined by Jennifer Fioretti, our Deputy Director, McKees Jordan, our Athletic and Facility Services Division Chief. Mark, are you waving hi to everybody? Cheryl Johnson, Community Recreation Division Chief, Eric Beach, Planning and Development Division Chief, Michael Simmons, Parks and Natural Resources Division Chief, and also with me is John Marlin, our Parks and Natural Resources Deputy Division Chief, Vincent Vurey, our Urban Forest Manager, and Sharleka Ashton from our 55+ Program. I also want to thank Megan Lawler from our Finance Team, who helped get me prepared today, and I'm sitting here with Keisha Holland, our new DPR Finance Officer. I'd also like to thank the staff at the Department of Management and Finance, in particular Maria, Richard, Emily, and Verna, who always have our back. And finally, I want to thank Mark Schwartz and Michelle Cowan for their leadership and support. So this slide shares our mission and our visions, and the photographs illustrate a wide array of programs and services that DPR provides. The next slide demonstrates how we strive to meet that mission and vision. We arranged these highlights by the six pillars of our DPR strategic plan, and the accomplishments range from the adoption of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan to having over 13,000 registrations for summer camp, to supporting our staff, to being the Trust for Public Lands' number five best large park system. None of these could happen without the dedication and hard work of the entire DPR team. They truly help to make Arlington an amazing place to live, work, and visit, and I feel lucky every day to lead this incredible team of parks and recreation professionals. I also want to thank the County Board for their continued support of DPR. On any given day, it is amazing to see how well our parks and our centers are being used by the public. This year, our focus on equity, this year, we hosted several department-wide events to continue normalizing the conversation on race and equity. We established a dedicated Race and Equity Working Group to facilitate division-specific discussions to further equity goals and to provide guidance on departmental policies and practices. We continue to organize numerous countywide events, such as MLK, Field of Heritage, and the Latino Americano Festival. And lastly, DPR has revamped its capital projects selection process to incorporate Equity Score and Equity Score, which will consider the need of neighborhood based on social and economic indicators as an overlay to the asset condition assessments. We will hear more about this from Eric Beach on Thursday's work session. Recently, DPR revamped our performance measures, recognizing the importance of accurate data collection for informed decision-making. I want to highlight our early childhood programs, which serve as an introduction to recreation programs for children's ages one through five. Two of our most popular and successful programs are the playgroup and creative preschool programs. Our Stay and Play program, that was launched in fiscal year '23, offers 90 minutes play in our toddler-friendly rooms for children's ages one to three and their caregivers. This is slightly different than the cooperative playgroup program that we had in prior years, where caregivers would drop off their children for allotted time, which is reflected in FY '22 and portion of FY '23. The Stay and Play program was initially offered at two locations, and in FY '24 was expanded to a third, so that we are now in Langston Brown, Madison, and Fairlington community centers. Based on the participation, we are estimating 450 to 500 participants, to a fulfillment rate of 60% and 67% for FY '24 and '25, respectively, and are looking forward to continuing the program, watching the program grow. Our creative preschool program facilitates recreational play and socialization for children's ages three to five. Half-day and full-day programs provide age-appropriate opportunities to develop social, communication, physical, and cognitive skills. With a max capacity of 160, you see that we consistently fill the majority of our available slots for this program. Parents and guardians of participants of this program consistently report satisfaction. Beginning in FY '24, we added a new outcome measure to gauge development in a child's social skills and independence. These two outcome measures, among others, assist us in ensuring that we're offering programming to foster healthy, creative, and active building blocks for children that prepare them for kindergarten. Like many of Lenny Department's presentations that you've heard up to this point, there are a host of challenges that influence our budget development. These include the fiscal impact of inflation, the cost of doing business is continuing to increase both for our contractual services and our own programs. We also have to manage our current vacancies and upcoming possible retirement. For example, in addition to those employees already in the drop program, we have 25 staff who are eligible to retire in FY '24, and 11 more who will be eligible in FY '25. We also need to balance maintenance levels of service while continuing to explore ways to expand free and affordable program offerings to our vulnerable populations, and we continually seek ways to streamline our processes and add efficiencies and enhance customer service. Now let's move on to the specifics of the DPR budget proposal. The county manager proposed a budget, sorry, excuse me, the county manager's proposed budget includes a nearly $63 million expense budget for DPR and an $18 million revenue budget, with a position count of just over 408 that are filled by permanent and temporary staff. This total number represents just over 314 permanent staff positions, and the remaining 94 are temporary position equivalents. The proposed budget includes both a reduction and elimination of positions resulting in the net reduction of 2.77 FTEs. As you know, reductions are part of DPR's proposed budget to assist in closing the county-wide gap. We have just over 775,000 proposed reductions, which I will detail on the next several slides. This, the first one, the proposed reduction eliminates the Community Arts Limited Term Program position that is currently approved through September 2025. This position is currently filled, and we have a one-time funding equivalent to the amount of the reduction, which is included in the proposed budget, so this position will not be eliminated until June 2025. The next is the 55-plus programming position, which has been vacant since the closing of the Lee Community Center in January 2021. As such, there is no impact to programming or to the community in this reduction. The next, in prior years, DPR made a payment to APS for the annual cost share for pool maintenance and operating at the three high schools, as we are a partner in the programming at those pools. The proposed reduction will fully discontinue the county's contribution, as we are no longer providing programming there. We are retaining funding for lane rental fees that we paid to APS for the Arlington Aquatics This proposed reduction would eliminate the personal training program and the associated staff, ultimately impacting a very small group of individuals who utilize the program. To give some context, DPR created the Personal Training Program in 1994, when we had an influx of members of the public bringing their own trainers into our fitness centers. To avoid having private business conducted on county property, the program was started. The program is supposed to be 100% cost recovery, as it is our highest form of personalized service. Since then, the personal training industry has boomed, and there are many affordable alternatives to the program offered in the private sector. In recent years, our program has not seen revenues and participation return to pre-COVID levels, meaning we have had to use county expense funding to cover the cost of the program. Further, when looking at the program through an equity lens, we find that this highly individual service benefits very few people, and those who have financial means to afford it, and uses the space in our fitness centers that could be adopted for group training classes that would benefit more constituents. Lastly, I know you've heard from some participants saying that they would pay the increased fees to have the service. In order to make the program fully recover its costs, we would need to more than double the cost of each session, making the program even more inaccessible to the majority of Arlingtonians, would have to divert other DPR resources, such as our public relations staff and community recreation division leadership, to focus on increasing participation, meaning that this staff could not focus on other county priorities. In recent years, I've been talking with the county manager about the possibility of removing our fitness center fees altogether, to make them open to all residents without letting fees be a barrier to getting healthy. Again, a measure to increase availability, not focusing on highly individual services. We are committed to working with the participants to find classes and programs that we offer that can provide them a new fitness experience, or we encourage participants to seek training from private sector providers. The next cut is the Printing and Postage budget. Printing and postage needs have shifted with ever-growing preference for electronic communication and digital content, like sharing QR codes, utilizing social media for promotion, and utilizing digital catalogs and flyers. Additionally, we expanded our use of multi-use marketing materials, like reusable special event banners, program stand-up banners, and comprehensive brochures. This has been beneficial, especially since external printing costs have increased. And finally, we are currently utilizing a contractor to perform inspections, sorry, this is the reduction for the landscape services. We are currently using a contractor to perform inspections, trash removal, mulching, and edging of landscapes and plant maintenance services for over 58 landscape beds. By modifying the maintenance inspection schedule performed by the contractor for three winter months, we will realize about $100,000 in savings. So now, now we talked about reductions, now we're going to talk about some of the key changes to this year's budget for DPR. So there's also increases. We have five that we'd like to highlight. These are the standard, so the first one is the contractual cost increases. These are the standard increases included every year in our department's base budget to accommodate the prices increase from our vendors. We also have ongoing maintenance for our capital improvement projects. These are the maintenance costs associated with the completed capital improvement projects that are coming online. We also have the new safety program coordinator that has been a priority at bars for a few years now, and we are pleased that it was included in the proposed budget. Currently, DPR's one-staff person is responsible for providing safety support, training, and coordination to over 300 permanent staff and hundreds of temporary staff, and thousands of Parks and Program users. The additional staff person will allow DPR to dedicate attention to indoor facilities, including equipment, programs, and classes within, while continuing to support the work of our Trade Center staff, who are part of the Service, Labor, and Trades Agreement that will go into effect in July. Speaking of which, the collective bargaining and training dollars, which will allow us to deliver an appropriate amount of training to the DPR supervisors, management, and HR staff, on the whole collective bargaining agreement. And then finally, last year, we had, sorry, lastly, we have some funding to replace our fleet pickup trucks in our Parks and Natural Resources with an electric vehicle. So the next three items I will be discussing in a little more detail. The first is for tree pruning and maintenance. This budget includes, I'm very excited about this one, this tree budget, this budget includes the amount of almost $1 million for tree pruning and maintenance. With the funding included in the '25 budget, we are projecting to maintain almost 2,800 more trees on our streets and right-of-ways. This supports a five-year maintenance cycle instead of the current 17-year cycle. This increased maintenance intervals will help us to mitigate risk and improve the environmental benefits that our trees provide. This will also enable our urban forestry staff to focus on preventative versus reactive maintenance. We will be contracting out these additional services with a new urban forester overseeing that contract. We also have one-time funding for $300,000 for invasive plant management that will support efforts to proactively address emerging invasive threats to over 500 acres of Arlington County's natural lands. Funding is in addition to the ongoing invasive plant budget of $100,000. Not only will funding expand the existing invasive management program, it also allows for the transition of the remaining larger parcels of land to dedicated maintenance by 2030. We will strategically select locations, as typically most locations require multi-years of active management treatment before we can move location to maintenance level. While we love the increase to be ongoing, we are excited to have additional funding to tackle more invasives just this next fiscal year. Now on to teen programming. Over the last nine months, the county has implemented new and expanded programs to address the demand for additional out-of-school programming for middle and high school students. Thanks to the county board's one-time funding for fiscal year '24, we were able to launch the new teen nights, starting in July 2023, and expand to the fall to operate most Saturdays. While mostly hosted at Love or Run, we do move around the county to have more teen takeovers at different community centers. We also have expanded the Arlington Mill after-school drop-in program with additional staffing, new programming, targeted outreach, and more days of programming, including for breaks and school days out. We've also continued to expand at TJ and Gunston, our other after-school programs, and adding additional staff, and we've seen our numbers rising there. We've piloted the teen clubs at Washington Lee and Kenmore Schools, and we're expanding trips to include more year-round trips, like, which one I thought was really nice, we've recently started doing college tour trips, which we just started in '24, and this brings students to college campuses when their parents and caregivers may not be able to have the time to do it. We've expanded the DJ and music production classes at Gunston Arlington, where they've traditionally only been at TJ, and we are fortunate that the $378,000 dedicated teen program is going to our budget. This funding for the continuation expansion of safe and secure after-school evening and weekend programmings, this will enable us to have fully funded the programs that we implemented in fiscal year '24, that was only originally supported by one-time funding. And we can continue to do some new programs, like we just started, like a couple weeks ago, the late-night basketball and soccer programs at Arlington Mill. These nights are for high school students only, and happen after the center closes on Fridays and Saturdays. We are particularly excited about the new programmer position, which we see as a key role in creating connections and expanding the support of programming during the out-of-school time. So now I'm going to touch on our revenues. Budgeted revenues for fiscal year '25 are just over $18 million, a 15% increase from FY '24. The net increase of $2.3 million is primarily attributed to the increased demand we are seeing on our contracted camps. Another $835,000 is tied to the proposed fee increases, as outlined in our fee resolution. In fiscal year '23, we provide almost about $1.3 million in fee reductions to over 1,500 unique households. Already in FY '24, we've provided over a million fee reductions with over 1,300 unique households. With respect to how we bring in our revenue, as you know, DPR has the annual fee resolution under review right now. Fee increases are anticipated for most programming, which I will touch on shortly. Although COVID, although COVID, for the most part, is in our rearview mirror, we continue to feel the impacts of the pandemic through our revenues. For some programming, participation levels have not resumed to pre-COVID levels. For others, we are seeing much higher participation levels and increased community interest in things like tennis, pickleball, and dance classes. I felt like I couldn't get through a work session without mentioning the word pickleball.
Of course.
I almost was there, but we threw it in. Sorry, I hope the spread wasn't too much. As previously mentioned, but this is the only time.
You think.
Well, you might bring it up, but this is it for my talking points. As previously mentioned, the post-pandemic operational costs have increased exponentially. In an effort to provide affordable recreational programming to the public during the pandemic, many of the fees remained unchanged for several years. This has created a gap between the fees charged for programming and the corresponding operational cost. To realign programming fees in accordance with the cost recovery model, we need a comprehensive view of our fees. As such, we analyzed overall program costs for current fees and the cost recovery goals. For FY '25, we are proposing a 7% increase for most programs, with the exception of a few select programs that will see increases at a higher level. For example, for our sports programs, the cost for referees has gone up exponentially. After careful analysis, including regional benchmarking, we set new fees that will cover the program cost while not providing too much of a burden on participants, and fee reductions will always apply. Over the next year, we will continue to review our fees and determine if additional changes need to be made for the FY 2026 fee resolution. So as we wrap up, we look to our future challenges. As I feel like I bring this up every year, but we are marking this year as the fifth year anniversary of the adoption of the Public Space Master Plan, while we've had many accomplishments that we should be proud, and as we look to the future, we will continue to work to achieve the policies and goals set out in that document. Now, since we have the FNRP that was adopted in December, we can turn our attention to the implementation of that plan with its 10 priority actions. Most of the priority actions require some level of pre-planning work to identify resources necessary. Based on the work completed this year, which also includes the completion of the Tree Canopy Study and the Deer Management Plan, we anticipate bringing forward recommendations as needed. We also have, are going to be responding to the community needs, ensuring equitable accessibility and fiscally sustainability of our programs. That will always be a challenge for us in today's financial climate. And while not relevant for FY '25, this is about the Boeing funding, based on the projected revenues and operating costs, we anticipate the Boeing funding will carry us through fiscal year '25 and a portion of '27. Now that we have been open for a few years, we've been able to establish a baseline for operational costs and projected revenues, and we look forward to having the conversation about Longbridge in the future. And lastly, as we continue to expand free and affordable programs, we need to always ensure that we have accessibility of these programs for our vulnerable populations. So with that, I look forward to answering your questions, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we have three commissioners here with us today, I think, and we'll take those, and then colleagues will see questions for commissioners or for our DPR staff. We've got, I think, Phil Klingelhofer, I saw him, Forestry and Natural Resources, Jill Baker, Parks and Rec. Is Jill here? Yeah, of course, I saw you come. Come on up, if you will. And we also have John Mingus, Chair of the Sports Commission, and he is on virtually. And maybe, if he's right there virtually, we might go ahead and get started with him while our other two commissioners get themselves settled. You can, maybe Chair, we'll go back and forth, that's fine. Yeah, why don't you stay there, and I'll bring you up whenever you're ready. Yeah, we'll take Mr. Mingus first.
Great. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So this will be, my bit will be very short. Thanks for the opportunity to present today. The bottom line is, the Sports Commission supports this budget and thinks it represents a very good common sense approach in the current environment. For example, we are fine with the elimination of the personal training program, given that it does not pay for itself while providing services to a small number of participants. Also, similarly, the elimination of the transfer to APS, given the change in the relationship in the pools, again, makes total sense. And then finally, on the fee side, given increased cost and benchmarking to neighboring jurisdictions, the proposed increases seem reasonable to us. And that's all I have.
Boy, are we efficient. That's great, thank you. Hang in there, we may have some questions for you. Phil, why don't you come on up, and then Jill will take you. Go ahead. Forestry and Natural, Mr. Klingelhofer first.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to share the views of the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission on the proposed budget. We realize that this work session is focused on the DPR budget, but the FNRC notes that the recently adopted Forestry and Natural Resource Plan, FNRP, is not just the responsibility of one department. Priority actions also focus on other departments, including community housing, planning, and development, which I'll touch on shortly. The Commission applauds the funding that supports the implementation of the FNRP, specifically the additional funding for almost $1 million for regular tree maintenance and one FTE to support the priority action 4.4.1, which is move from reactive to proactive maintenance of publicly owned natural assets. And secondly, we're very pleased by the addition of one-time funding of $300,000 for the invasive species control, to supplement the annual funding of $109,000, and that's in FNRP, that's Strategic Direction 3.2. The FNRC notes that these budget items are investments in Arlington's future. It's obvious, it's obviously much more cost-effective and beneficial to carefully maintain and nurture the many thousands of existing large mature trees in the county, rather than having to wait for new trees at considerable expense and waiting decades for them to mature. Similarly, removing invasive plants is essential to the health of our forests and natural areas, bringing the major gains in forest health, biodiversity, beauty, and the quality of people's experience in county parks. In addition, both tree maintenance and invasive species control are key actions needed to meet the goal of enhancing the county's natural capital as described in DPR's Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, for fiscal years 2023 to 2032. The FNRC recommends continued higher level of funding for the invasive species control beyond FY '25, instead of losing the momentum after one-time addition of $300,000 is spent. The Commission also believes that the county is missing a major opportunity to carry out another of the another of the top priorities of both the FNRP and the Public Spaces Master Plan, with educating county residents about the value of the environment and natural resources by failing to open the nature centers to pre-pandemic hours. The centers are especially important because they serve different and diverse communities. The reduced hours have resulted in sharply reduced visits. Not fully staffing the nature centers also means that the county is failing to take advantage of an enormously valuable and free-to-the-county resource, and that's volunteer time from groups like the tree stewards and the Arlington Regional Master Naturalists. Volunteer hours at the nature center have dropped from an average of 3,400 hours pre-pandemic to just over 1,700 per year, with adult volunteer time valued at $31.80 by the Virginia Department of Forestry. That adds up to $54,000 worth of potential volunteer resources that the county has left on the table. Indeed, a small additional investment in the nature center staffing to restore full hours and volunteer coordination, perhaps $30,000 per year, would more than pay for itself in terms of additional resources and services that the volunteers would provide. Now, lastly, I want to highlight another important item, the need for funding for a lot coverage study in the CPHD work plan, as was identified in FNRP Priority 1.2.3. The FNRC sent a letter to the County Board yesterday to supplement our earlier recommendation to the County Board that Arlington should review its existing lot coverage standards and practices and to do so on a fast timetable. Since our letter of February 23, FNRC has learned that the Department of Community Planning, Housing, and Development, CPHD, has not included a lot coverage study in its FY '25 work plan. We urge that the county operating budget for FY '25 should include adequate resources for CPHD to fully develop this analysis within the calendar year 2024. Our earlier letter presented a detailed rationale for a study that would assess how the current lot coverage standards are contributing to the steady decline of Arlington's tree canopy, as the rapid pace of clear-cutting properties to create space for the extremely large single and multifamily dwellings continues unabated. We want to reiterate our belief stated in that letter, that it is possible for both increased housing opportunities and restoring precious tree canopy. However, successful balance of these priorities requires investment in a thoughtful analysis of lot coverage options and adoption of reasonable policies to ensure that new construction provides enough space for canopy trees to grow and thrive. Furthermore, the newly adopted Forestry and Natural Resource Plan calls for the county to enhance development standards to optimize retention or replacement of tree canopy, natural vegetation, permeable surfaces, and biophilic elements. This is Action 1.2.3, in support of the plan's overarching goal to restore tree canopy coverage to 40% on Arlington's public and private lands. That's Action 1.1.1. The FNRC believes that these priorities provide a strong justification for immediate funding and support for a lot coverage study, because the 40% tree canopy goal cannot be achieved under current lot coverage standards. With regards to CPHD, the resource constraints, the imperative for a lot coverage study seems comparable to, if not greater than, the importance of other studies called for in the CPHD work plan. The widespread call for this study among advisory commissions and civic groups should prompt a reassessment by CPHD of the, sorry, of the relative priority of this study and its work plan. The county staff should also consider how cost to CPHD of a lot coverage study could be mitigated, for example, through the use of contractor services rather than an FTE and/or through adjustment of developer service fees to cover the costs of this important work. FNRC believes that the many benefits of assessing this issue justify the allocation of additional resources. Our February letter highlighted the significant environmental equity and climate resilience benefits of restoring healthy tree canopies in all of our neighborhoods. A lot coverage study that addresses impervious surfaces would support greater use of green infrastructure to reduce harmful and costful stormwater runoff, consistent with the objectives of the recently adopted stormwater utility fee. The study could identify cost-effective collaboration opportunities to bring better information and services to developers, homeowners, and neighbors, as called for in the Forestry and Natural Resource Plan. In short, the benefit-cost balance clearly favors a study at this time. I thank you for the opportunity to share your views, and I'm sorry I went on so long.
That's okay. You kind of did two work sessions in one, that's all right. We should have invited you to CPHD possibly, but that's fine, thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'll take, and stick around, we may have some questions.
Certainly.
Ms. Barker.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Thank you for having me. I'm Jill Barker, the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission at the Parks.
March Parks, excuse me.
Thank you for having me. I'm new at this, this is my first year as the Chair. So I appreciate being able to give you these comments that track the comments that I put in writing on March 29 from our Commission. We continue to hold the view, as we have for the past two years, that understaffing of the county's nature centers is detrimental to the public, especially those living in Arlington's heat islands. It diminishes the ability of the nature centers to serve the environmental education components of the newly adopted Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. Increasing the availability of the nature centers supports the goals of the Biophilic Cities Network, joined by Arlington in 2020, to provide equitable access to nature, conserve natural resources, and provide educational opportunities to learn about nature. Arlington's, well, Phil already said this, but Arlington's outstanding volunteer corps provided more than 3,000 nature center-related hours before the pandemic each year, and after the pandemic, those hours are about half. We are very pleased with the county manager's emphasis on invasive plant control and tree maintenance. These are two very important investments required to maintain Arlington's natural capital. But we encourage the county to consider increasing ongoing funding for the invasive plant program, so that more acres can be transferred to the active maintenance category sooner, reducing the need for aggressive treatment, kind of on an emergency basis. While the proposed one-time funding increase is an improvement, ongoing funding would allow the most optimal and cost-effective invasive plant removal strategy. Further, we encourage the county to adopt a climate action plan to promote coordinated climate resilience strategies in all departments, and we especially encourage collaboration among the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Environmental Services to preserve, protect, and expand Arlington's tree canopy to help control the excessive stormwater runoff and erosion that threatens the trees in our parks. A climate action plan would help transparently resolve competition between a built versus a green infrastructure in a manner that accords with the County Board's priorities. As we all know, this is not an issue that's going away. We will have this tension for some time now. We are extremely pleased and gratified about the news from the DPR staff, that their diligence succeeded in increasing the summer camp enrollment for those needing fee reductions. We appreciate the county's commitment to these children and to the teenagers that will benefit from the new proposed funding. Arlington's parks and natural spaces are highly valued, highly valuable, but they're vulnerable. PRC supports continued and enhanced investment in the viability and quality of these important natural assets, and we look forward to discussing additional acquisition of public lands as part of the Capital Improvement Plan for 2025. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, colleagues, questions? Who would like, oh, you can stay there, whichever you prefer, it's fine. Stay in the hot spot if you want.
I didn't know I was going to get questions.
You might, you might not. You might not. Mr. Karen Tounas, would you like to borrow my mic?
I will.
Go ahead.
So, and the interesting of getting this very conversation going, this is a department that covers more and more and more and more, right, functions, very significant ones. No question, I want to ask you about two things. First is the after-school youth programs that I've been able to see myself how successful the department has been in attracting more youth to that and help building up this program. So we have been having a lot of advocacy in the community and a lot of recognition that this is the way to go, and we have been asked to add resources. Can you elaborate a little bit? What are the dynamics of growth and scaling for these, and what are the bottlenecks for these programs?
Great. I think, as we all know, addressing these programs is not just DPR, but sort of holistic around the county, and we need to look to all of our partners, including APS, to figure out solutions. So I would not say that we have regards bottlenecks, per se, but opportunities to figure out where are the best places to provide additional services. As you said, I know you've been to Arlington Mill program, and that program has really expanded and is really amazing. We're really pleased with it. We're drawing kids from Kenmore and from Wakefield, and the program continues to grow. As I said earlier, our after-school programs are continuing to grow, and we created these clubs at these other high school and middle school. So I think there's opportunities for us to do more of these types of clubs. There's opportunities for us to coordinate with APS to understand how do we best continue to expand the after-school needs. For example, someplace like Wakefield, is it really us, or is it APS that would potentially provide it, and we provide support for them? But I do think that we continue to see that there are more areas where we can provide after-school for kids. I think there are some, you know, hindrances, when the late buses leave, when kids need to get home, transportation. I don't think transportation is inherently a problem, it's more just making sure that everyone understands the safe routes that they need to take to get to the different programs. But I think what we've done this past year is sort of beginning to sort of see how we can do more. I do note that also we have to make sure that we meet kids where we are, which is one of the programs that we're doing, this bawling and kicking it at the mill, we specifically made it for high school students, because one of the things that we do see also is that some of our programs, they sometimes skew more towards the tweens. So you're having, like, some of our evening programs, it's really important to catch these kids early, but you're getting sort of late middle school and early high school kids, and you're not getting some of the older kids coming to it because they don't really want to hang out with, you know, 14-year-olds. So that's why we said that you actually have to have your high school ID to come into the programs at Arlington Mill on Friday and Saturday night. So also trying to figure out programs that kind of meet kids where they are and provide what they want to do.
That's excellent. So my question is, I guess, towards the other issue that I've seen, it really depends, I mean, what I've experienced in the couple of programs that I visited, it was about staffing. So adequately-prepared staff is obviously way more effective in keeping the program going and keeping the program growing, most importantly, because it's word of mouth. I mean, teens and youth are basically signing up because they feel that there is a flow going towards the program. So what is the plan for growing that staff, or having more staff that will be able to serve these programs as we grow?
Well, so a couple of things. One, as you appreciate, that in this budget, we are being given another permanent employee, which is really important for us, and one of the things we're going to be going into this is ensuring that this employee's position will be known for nights and after-school weekends, like coming and hiring them for that. Having also the other funding as permanent in our budget is also really helpful, because we do have permanent staff, and we also have a lot of temporary staff as well. But knowing that that funding is there helps us to keep that pipeline of employees coming back, because sometimes if you don't know if your program is going to continue to happen, we do lose temporary staff. It is funky, the temporary staff, right, because they're working, sort of interested in not working always full 40 hours a week, they're working less than that, so we're always trying to attract new staff. I have to say that we really struggled, sort of during COVID, we lost a lot of our temporary staff, and bringing them back has taken some time. I think we're really in a good place, we're coming back to that level, but I know, like, for a couple of years, we had some struggles in terms of trying to find staffing. But I think it's the funding that we have here, this permanent funding, will help us to kind of create that sort of baseline in order for us to say, like, yes, we have permanent funding, which means that these positions will go on and these programs are continuing.
Thank you. I will yield, I want to hear about nature centers, but I'm sure you will have the opportunity to elaborate.
Yeah, I want to hear about those too, but we'll get there. Ms. Coffey.
Oh, well, I'm going to continue on our teen programming topic and also allow others to get to nature centers. You know, I think one thing that we're hearing is both from internally, you know, there are a lot of programs and things happening, and then externally, a lot of people don't know what they are, what the opportunities are. How are you, or do you hope to approach kind of like the marketing and community awareness side, just of making sure people know what's out there from DPR?
So we are trying lots of different things. So first of all, we are definitely working more to have our materials bilingual and getting out there. I'm going to use an example that we did for summer camp to sort of talk about the way we were changing some of our outreach, and I think that that will help sort of talk about how we're trying to get things out into the public more. We have a week before summer camp that is registration only for people with, what's it called, fee reductions. And this year, we did a huge campaign where we went out to almost 20 different locations. We were in line at AFAC, we went to affordable housing locations, we went to 20 different places, we went to fairs and everything, and trying to sort of up the knowledge of what was going on. And whenever we're at those things, we also have information about our teen nights and everything else. We saw that in that first week of registration, we had more registrations than we had the entire year for people with fee reductions. So we are beginning to realize we need to get out more, and we're happy to know that our engagement team is fully staffed up. This year is our first time, but it was a whole of department effort to get out there. So I think we need to get out there more, we need to be in multiple languages, and we also need to figure out what's the best way to communicate with parents, but also with kids. So we're in all the, like, what used to be Peach Jar for schools, or whatever it is, we're in all those things everywhere, but also making sure that we are sort of hitting up how are kids hearing about us, and then how are parents, which are actually quite different. So I think we, I think we need to continue to do this work. I don't, we definitely don't have it down to a science at all, but I think we are beginning to realize the way to get to people to know what we're doing is to meet them where they are. Another thing that we've been doing is, for example, like the head of the Arlington, a bunch of our different permanent employees go into APS at lunchtime and are able to go into the cafeteria and hand out and talk to students about what we're doing. We're at a lot of different fairs as well. So one of the things that we've been doing is, I know we were at WNL, we were at Wakefield and a couple other schools, and I know we went to Swanson too during their lunch hours, so that we can try to connect with students, so they can know about our programs.
Yeah, and I'll ask one more. But, so the additional FTE, the programmer to role, do you have kind of a mental plan in terms of the specific responsibilities or what they're going to cover? You know, I know dedicated to the teen programming and after-school, but, you know, is it more of the literal planning, the programming, or kind of the bigger picture, how do we arrange spaces, how do we arrange creating access and doing this on-the-ground engagement? You know, is there a picture of that yet, or is that something that we still kind of need to flesh out a bit?
So they will be joining a team of other programmers that all work at our community recreation division. This person specifically, I think their job will be twofold. One will be to focusing and being responsibility for, having a specific responsibility for some of the programming that we started this past year, to make sure that it's consistent and ongoing. But we see also, we want this person to be a fixture either in the community and helping to promote these programs, but also we have to, to get to Mr. Karen Tounas's points, have to look at ways for us to expand as well, and that is a point that we really need this employee and the whole group to do it. We are lucky enough to have both our community recreation division and our athletic and facility services division work together really closely, so that we have the facility staff that also supports the community recreation program. So we have a team that can help us out where the places and the spaces are, but I think this really is a question of, like, making sure that we have permanent staff overseeing programs, and then how do we get to the expansion that we know we need to do.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, and I'll just close with a comment that I know part of the work plan for DHS is going to include a child and youth long-term plan about programs, and I would love to see this role be engaged in that DHS planning process, so that we can think through from the DPR and the implementation side while we do the plan of how do we want to create these spaces long-term, and just make sure that there's a lot of interconnection and development as we go along.
Oh, certainly, and we've been in touch with DHS, we're really excited about this, because we know it is not just with them, but this position will be engaged with it, but also, like, Cheryl Johnson, our Division will be engaged with it, but also like Cheryl Johnson, our division chief, plans to be engaged as well. So we see this as something that, I mean, I'd look forward to being part of it too. So we do know this position will be a part of it, but we really see this as a whole department engagement. So we're excited for it as well.
Thank you. I think that's a real priority for me, so I'm glad it's a shared priority.
Absolutely. I'm glad to hear about all the extra outreach and going to the cafeterias at lunchtime. To me, that's kind of like, well, duh, I mean, why didn't we think, you know, that it's a great idea? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to just check camps, registrations, we don't, we're not getting emails right now.
Is everything okay? So registrations, like, I mean, it's still going on, but the big first days are over.
Yeah, I just feel like sometimes I'm walking down the street and I'm like, camps, they're working. Or at least, I mean, just, I know how hard you worked on that, and that's registration, that's a good point, Madam Chair, and not the summer fully, and there's, we will hear about it if anything doesn't go. But just a thank you, it's an immense amount of work, particularly, I think, you know, it's easy to say, I wish it all worked, and harder to make it actually do so. So the last two years, I know there's been a ton of energy and effort. So huge thank you there. On teen programming, I don't, you know, I don't know, this might be for the manager, it's not, it's just meant to be a question to try and understand. There's a mass, in the proposed budget, there's a significant investment for kids who are clearly at risk of opioid addiction. Yes, I think all of us on the board want to do that. There's this additional ask from advocates for after-school programming. And so that is at locations where there's perhaps a greater need based on school free and reduced lunch populations. And I am trying to figure out where that should live if we decide to do a significant investment there. And this is pilfering a little bit of some Ms. Coffey's comments, but I hope it's okay to pilfer in this way. Is it, and I'm genuinely trying to understand. I think it's DPR, but it could be schools and it could be extended day. And different pieces will be all three of those. But if we're pretty determined to do a big bucket of funding at this stage, is there a recommendation on where that would live of the three places? And there may be research that I need to do, but I just, that's the question for me.
So two, I'm going to answer the question, and Jane, you can feel free to amend my answer in any way you feel appropriate. There's two pieces here. One is the space for those programs, okay? And we've, you had the, we had the conversation when the school board was here. I cannot sit here and tell you exactly when school gyms or school fields are available. I don't have that information in front of me. I know it's a big challenge with after-school activities and athletics. So I think to the extent there are spots there, I'm not thinking about classroom space because there's a lot of classroom space available. I think there's definitely that component. And then there are other things, which we've met with Voice and Ashburn and other groups who are talking about potential nonprofit partners to come in. And I think in that case, at least what I would have in mind was if the board was interested in doing some sort of notice of funding availability, to do a call for programs out there, and then we try to match that with the resources available. Jane can speak to the availability we might have in county resources, in community centers. I think there's a huge challenge there. But I can't sit here and tell you right now that I know this specific program that I've heard about belongs in this specific place. So as far as who would do that, that would be something that we would do, I think, either through the new FTE that Parks has with DHS, or I'll let Jane comment about her thoughts about that.
So I think, as Mark was saying, we have to sort of work through it to some extent. We have some locations, but where we are in those schools, our locations where there currently are joint use centers, which are where we have a community center that is attached to a school, which makes it an easy pipeline for us to be able to provide the after-school programs. That's the model for TJ and for Gunston, and it works well. We are not really in schools that are not, that don't have joint use centers. That's not to say we could not be, it just hasn't been a model that has happened in the past. You know, we used to run at the elementary age, a pretty robust extended-day program, but as APS's extended-day program got really good, it kind of put us out of business because people particularly just wanted, they want, kids wanted to stay at school and their parents wanted to stay at school because it was easier than them coming to our programs. And we saw our numbers just dropped out when APS really ramped up their extended day. So I think it's a conversation about what's the right location to meet the kids where they want to be. We are seeing kids coming to Arlington Mill. I think there's opportunity there, potentially to actually be bigger if we necessarily, if we wanted to be. We might have to make some choices about the programming that we are providing there to make that space. But, you know, it's definitely a conversation that needs to be had, I think, a little bit more to determine where is the right place for this to be housed, or a combination of that.
Great, thank you. I've got a spreadsheet of thoughts with extended day and Division Two Pro and Gregory Mar to, God forbid, Division Head, that's your bucket, but, you know, and I don't want to overpromise. I don't think that all that advocates have asked, I'm going to be able to deliver, but I also do think this is an opportunity and we need to, I'm going to be leaning towards investing. I'm more asking the question because I would rather surface it and then work with you than just send a spreadsheet behind the scenes. And so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Liz, can you?
Adjacent to that is the question of efficiencies across all of our departments. So recognizing that we've got different skill sets in DHS, DPR, and APS, where are we today capturing efficiency across them? And I see the pools have moved back and forth, extended day moved back and forth. And are there opportunities where we might better coordinate or even have the same staff so that people have full-time jobs instead of part-time jobs?
So, you know, there's always ways to explore more efficiencies. I meet with, on the facility side, I meet with Renee Harper every other week as a way for, with my team to sort of talk about how we do some of our efficiencies, I think I've shared. Like, we mow their lawns, like, we do things for schools, we maintain their fields. So there is a lot of coordination back and forth between our department and with schools sort of at the facility level. And we see that within the community centers because they maintain, they're the janitorial services at those joint use centers, instead of saying DES coming into our half and, you know. So there are, we already are meeting some of those efficiencies. We do have, like, for summer camp, for example, a lot of teachers come and work for us. We have extended-day staff who do come and work for us as well. So we have people that are throughout the year, are on two different, both of our budgets. And we have actually recently, somebody has come over from schools, is now the deputy division chief over at AFS. And so we're looking at ways that we can potentially even continue to sort of make sure that we are, that staff over there knows that when they're not working, there's opportunities with us as well. So I think, as you said, there's always ways to continue to find more efficiencies. Part of it is us, everyone's sort of, like, we are definitely part of the out-of-school time world. And so we are after schools and evenings, which is at a time often when schools is not as much involved. And so how do we make sure that what we're doing is, I guess, streamlined as possible for the public? I mean, I think that's the big case, is making sure that the public sees us as being kind of seamless for their kids.
And for our kids specifically, do we, do we know like what penetration of the population, what percentage of kids are involved in a DPR program? Do we share any data back with schools to be supportive on social, emotional, or academic?
So we, I would have to get back to you on that, because we serve a very large number of kids in our programs. We also have partner groups that also serve those kids. We don't collect, we don't have their specific data. We have information by zip code, which is sort of the best we can do. We don't ask people in our data like what school they go to, but we do have zip code data. So I would have to probably get back to you because we really would need to run some reports to see that about where the kids are and how we're doing with them. We do not specifically work with the schools on very unspecific kids, you know, individually, unless it's someplace where we have a program and they put us in touch with their teacher. But it's very rare because again, it's, again, the sort of out-of-school time and we're seen as their recreation space. But I still could get back to you on that sort of data-specific question.
Okay, great. And then last question is around our climate resilience. So I know between the FNRP and the work that you guys do every day and our parks, that you're very focused on supporting all of us in that effort. Have we thought about, as we do the teen programming, how we can engage our young people in that climate resilience building, perhaps at nature centers or in the after-school programming, given that the climate anxiety is understandably through the roof for our young people and our residents?
Yes, and so a couple of fun things we've been doing, like, so we created a couple of years ago at our Parks Natural Resources Group, a group called Park Core, which is a summer program, although we expanded this year to spring break as well, where we have a high school sort of stipend program where we bring kids in for a week to learn about working for us. We saw it as opportunity to introduce them on environmental issues, but also potentially a pipeline for a government job. If someone's not interested in, you know, maybe going to school, they can come work for us. And so we've been doing that for a number of years, and it's a pretty amazing program that we're very proud of. We also are trying to do more, like, one of our big mega camps that we ran last summer was actually in partnership with our nature center, which we had never done before, typically had been like, oh, here's nature center and here's recreation, and we put it together, and it was a very successful camp as well. So we are trying to bring nature and that sort of nature education into everything that we're doing. Our nature centers go to every single first grade class, and we are now trying to expand also into fourth grade. And we are trying to do more pop-ups. Some, and I know we're going to get into that conversation, some of the work that they are doing are on the days when the centers closed. So I just, as we get into it, when the centers are closed, it doesn't mean that we are not doing environmental or like nature-based work, it's just maybe not happening at the centers.
Thank you. Okay, I think I'd be interested in that data too. I sort of, like, how much are we reaching our young people? Nature centers, if you had a large chunk of one-time money, could you set up maybe a two-year pilot program where we would have, really push the nature centers, get them open, get kids into them, get programming, encourage people for mental health to come and walk in our parks? You know, a real push. I didn't warn you about this because it really popped into my head a little bit, like, while I'm sitting here, I'm sorry. But that's, I just really think for years, we've been talking about the nature centers, and I know you're doing a lot. I wonder if a big push could really be helpful, and there are a lot of young people and actually adults that would do really well sitting outside with some green leaves for a while, and they don't really even know that, or if they think about it, the center's closed. I don't know. What would it take?
So I, I don't-
Or would it be useful?
Not to discount what you're suggesting. I would just say that for us to get the centers open is employees, and employees really need to be permanent staff or permanent funding. Some of it is permanent employees, some of it is temporary, but I need to know that that funding is going to be there for us to be able to bring people online, to be able to work for us. So I do have some concerns about one-time funding for employees. It's just, it's a hard, it's hard for us to even hire for that.
Right. That's why I said two years and pilot, but-
Well, if I could interject, and I know that the last, last year, we did a little bit of it, but both for parks and libraries that you're going to have in front of you, their staffing models, we've moved a long way away from relying just on temporary staff, but we still have a ways to go with both parks and libraries. And I will tell you that the most effective way to get more hours at the nature centers and do these other things is to invest in ongoing funding and eliminate these, their inequities in the workforce that present a challenge. Jane can speak to, you know, the challenges with that. I just, when I presented a budget to you this year that was in balance, I just didn't have enough money to take the next step on that. So I would encourage, as much as I think nature centers are important, I think, as Jane said, we need the people to do it, that we can actually move around, that we know will be there. I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
No, I mean, that's sort of it, but we can provide models of how we can reopen centers. I just worry that like if that pilot in two years doesn't work, you know, and so we consistently just find it better for us to be able to hire permanent employees, especially in the nature centers, where it's going to be sort of week in, week out, day in, day out of making sure that these centers stay open.
So it's not an issue of, I mean, I feel like it's a bit of a downward spiral because they're not open, people aren't there, because people aren't there, it doesn't seem to be a priority, if you see what I'm saying. So I don't know, we'll see, maybe a five-year grant, like a grant. We do our own grant, and maybe that's enough time to make it worthwhile, and I understand. And then we could see if it's really working, and then it might become more of a priority and something that we could be easier to move into ongoing. But anyway, that's just a thought that I just toss out here. Colleagues, more questions? We're going longest on park because this is a, we've got three commissions and a whole lot of interest and a whole lot of questions, so maybe go till about 4:10 if we can. Mr. Carrington.
Quickly, as a follow-up, the nature centers though, we have a lot of possibilities of public-private partnerships there. Is it, I understand that we need, you know, permanent staff and that at least the core staff has to be permanent in order to keep them open and be reliable in the service that they provide. But how do we digest the fact that we have so many volunteer organizations that could do that as well? So they could help us keep them open. I understand that for other places, this is more difficult, but for nature centers, maybe it's a little bit less difficult to involve them.
I would just, while I love volunteers, and we have them all over the county, and the park stewards have done amazing work, as has the master naturalists and all of those, and I would never discount their work because they really enable us to do so much more and leverage the work that permanent staff do. I don't think a model where a community, this county facility is operated by volunteers or opened or locked or anything is the way that we would go. We welcome volunteers into our centers to help provide programming, to do other things, but I still feel like in order for us to get back to out, the full hours of the center, it needs to be in a system that has county staff.
Okay.
All right.
Just one more.
Real quick.
We said we are not going to talk about pickleball, I mean, but this is not a question about pickleball, it's a general question. So the level of service study is ongoing right now. So we are trying to figure out where to accommodate the demand for sports and especially in parks facilities. Can you say a little bit about where we are and when we are going to see results from this?
Sure. We are in early days of that. This year, as I said, it was the PSMP's fifth year, and that's when the recommendation was to do the levels, the update in the fifth year. So we are in the process of bringing on a contractor, consultant planner, to help us do the study, which is basically based off of two different things. One, a county-wide statistically valid survey where we ask very specific questions that we do every five years, so we make sure that it's consistent. And we will be adding pickleball to that this year though, because we obviously know that that's a new trend that was not there five years ago. And then we also do benchmarking against the same sort of sister cities that we use for a lot of our other processes as well, and then we come back. So that's, work will be kicking off this summer, and we're looking forward to it being while a, not as big as the last process, but a good conversation.
Okay.
Thank you. Maureen.
Yeah, I'll just leave with a comment on transportation. And, you know, I think our nature centers are really great. They're also hard to get to if you don't drive. As someone who lives in Clarendon, I know of them, but I don't go because it would be so far out of my way and I would be passing so many other things to get there. But as we do our transportation planning in the next upcoming year, I think really prioritizing putting our public spaces on our transit network and making sure that they're on our high priority network is something I'm really interested in pursuing. Lubbock Run, for example, is not that far away from me, and yet it would take 45 minutes on public transit to actually get there because I would be either metro to a bus or a bus to another bus and then walk. And I think we have such great resources, but we're not, we're not enabling our residents to use them in the ways that we really should. And so really looking at that interdependence and corresponding with transportation is something I think we should prioritize.
Yep, great. All those buses, kind of green leaves on them, and you'd know they'd take you there. All right. Susan?
Yeah, I think in that same-
Thank you.
In that same venue, we talk about most of our residents, a huge majority of our residents are within 10 minutes of a park. Can you share what that number is these days, what it looks like in terms of 10-minute transit or walk to a recreation center, and how we can improve? I think we hear a lot from a few neighborhoods that feel disconnected from parks, and I'm curious, kind of in the long-range planning, as we gear up for CIP later, where does that fit in your thinking?
So I don't have data on a 10-minute walk to nature, to community centers. We'd have to really look at that and start doing some planning around that. In terms of the 10-minute walk to a park, we continue to be there, but as we even said 10-minute walk to a park, we continue to be there, be there. But as we even said during our PSMP update, that 10-minute walk to a park doesn't always equate what park you're walking to. And so, or the quality of that park, or the number of people who live close to that park, meaning that we have some folks who live next to, who back up to a park on, you know, from their single-family home, and it's quiet and huge. And then we have other people who are all sharing Mosaic Park in Boston, and that's thousands of people. So access is really important, but then also we always talk about making sure that there's, it's, parks are in the right place as well. But we do still continue to be in that 10-minute park, walk to a park. I think we are really, really, really lucky to have the spine of the four-mile-run parks that just really go the length of our county and hit in communities all along, in high-density areas and low, because that really enables people to get connected to parkland in a way that I don't think other communities have.
Great. Matt?
Thank you. I'm mindful, we need to make 410. So on tree equity, I'm going to ask for a little time to follow up on the conversations from year and a half, year and a half ago with you and Ms. Fioretti on, I think, maybe Mr. Manager on Nova Parks, we should, we may want to, I would like to have a conversation, or I think I would like to have a conversation. On the nature centers, I, I don't know all the numbers, but I am inclined to support, mindful of the challenges, I'm inclined to support FTE, or TWO, I think it is there. I'll need help getting to the score for that, or the cost that that would be. And then maybe I can follow up with questions on the personal trainer program. I'd love to, and, you know, since we've had 40 people email in, I'm curious if we could means test it. That would not obviate all of the equity concerns you mentioned, I don't think, but that's one question. I don't know the number of people using the program now, and I may have missed it. And then I think we're at TJ, but not at Langston and Fairlington anymore. So those are questions that, you know, lead to the chair and to you as to the time best to follow up on them.
Yeah, maybe if he's happy having followed up later, maybe we could do that, and then I'd get to ask some more questions. Thank you. Trees. This is very strange, but since I started to learn about how bad ivy is for trees, when I drive around, particularly this time of year, I see beautiful trees that are being strangled by ivory on private homes. It drives me crazy. I actually think about going and knocking on the door and asking if, could I, or somebody come and cut down the ivy? Would you mind? And it occurred to me, could we get a volunteer thing where people just put flyers in? I mean, I don't want to be too challenging to people, but what if you got a flyer in your, in your mailbox saying, we'd like to help take care of your tree and take down the ivy if you'd like, call this number, something like that. Has anybody done that or anything like it?
So we have done some PSAs that have been actually quite popular, and we have done them, about tree maintenance on individual property and about things like that. But I do appreciate that. Actually, the county manager, when we were talking about the adoption of the FNRP, did ask us about creating sort of a toolbox or something where we can do outreach to people, because it's sort of like, well, now you've adopted this, what does it mean for me as an individual?
Right.
And so we could look at ways, I think, as we implement this year, as our first time, about, you know, as we just adopted it, how do we kind of reach into that public? I think we can re-pull out some of our PSAs, because again, they were popular, and I appreciate the opportunity maybe to do flyers, although, as you know, as we cut our printing budget. But also-
But this is true, half sheets instead of a whole sheet. But we've got volunteers, right?
But there are ways, and, you know, I get things in my trash sometimes from, you know, so I think we could coordinate to figure out a way to do some outreach, but I know what you're talking about, and it is in fact frustrating.
And particularly if it's a number to, I mean, you worry about the ivy, but then if you have to call on Arborst, you have to, I mean, it's just too much. Great, all right, thank you. Mr. Manager, we are, so we've heard a lot about lot coverage. We're having some conversations. Is there anything you wish to share about that at the moment?
Yes, no, because we are going to be meeting with all of you, and we're going to have separate conversations, actually, this week. We're kicking it off, and I think that will be followed up by another public discussion that you're going to have at some point. I don't know exactly when, but I'd like to say that the conversation about lot coverage, and I heard Phil's, you know, comments on that, the county board did a very extensive process that started back, actually, in the 90s and concluded in about 2005. And there's a lot of material that we've put together that we're going to share with you. One thing I would note is that since then, the biggest change that's been done, having affect that, is our land disturbance permitting process, our LDA permit process. It's a very different set of circumstances where we have some additional tools, but I will say this, which is that the fundamental challenges still remain, which is that if you want to have more green space, and you also want to have more people able to live in a residential setting, you know, these, these, these questions were struggled over at least five to six years. I don't have a clever solution for you, but it will be a hard discussion, and I know if it's the board's desire to move ahead with that, we'll be ready.
Thank you. I think we have a community that really would like to have that hard discussion. All right. Thank you all so very much. Really appreciate it. It always strikes me how everybody loves parks and recreation and all of the programs that we do and the nature centers, and it's, it's great to have you here. I appreciate the good discussion. Next, we have compensation. All right. And I'm going to stand up for just a second, you guys in stretch. Oof, okay. I can't sit for long anymore. Well, it's just too much sitting. All right. Ms. Foster, welcome. It's all right. Mark, do you want to do the introduction?
Yes, Madam Chair, with me today is Marcy Foster and the Department of Human Resources, and I'm going to turn it over to her for the presentation.
A little bit of the workforce statistics for you to help you make some of your decisions. I do have staff with me. Tamara Galiani has joined me at the table. She handles recruitment and compensation. Seated right up front, Jason Drake handles employee relations and training and organizational development. And next to him is Kristin Young, who handles all employee benefits and payroll. So hopefully, we can answer any questions you have about the workforce, and we'll get started. Luan, Luan is right behind Kristin. She and Shannon have put together most of the budget and the presentation that you will see today. So we'll get started on the compensation presentation and the next slide. So total compensation is how employees view their, their whole package here. It is just not your salary, but it's your benefits, your training, your environment. So we're going to go through some of these slides, and we'll have a slide on equity and the PRISM project, which I'm sure you've had a little, heard a little bit about along the way. Okay, our mission, to provide leadership and expertise to attract, develop, and retain a high-performing and diverse workforce. So behind all these great programs that you're hearing about from parks, and you'll hear about from libraries shortly, and all throughout the county, is you have a great workforce, and we want to make sure that we can keep bringing them in and keep them after we get them here. So, next slide. Our total compensation packages recognizes our employees are the foundation of our success. We strive to offer a meaningful, well-rounded total compensation package that provides employees with fair, competitive pay, benefits, and retirement options. All right, so our first slide, looking at pay in the region, and you do have a pay philosophy that right now, we compare our pay to our peers in Fairfax, Alexandria, and Prince William. So the first three shown are, are the organizations that are in your written pay philosophy. We pulled a couple more in at the bottom, the schools and Loudon, because Loudon is becoming a player in this region. So you can see besides us, the only organization not offering a COLA is Loudon. So there are COLAs in the first column. The annual merit increase is the second column, and so organizations are all across the board. Some are on steps, some are on open ranges, so they have a wide variety of merit increases, normally on the employee's anniversary date. And then range movement, which you probably hear about a little less, is how the pay ranges for each job classification move. So if you don't keep moving your ranges, people keep hitting max, they get frustrated, that's when you start looking for other jobs. So organizations across the board are often moving their range. So this is how we are comparing in the region, and you can see Loudon, who I said probably hasn't been a player up until now, has big merit increases this year and a big range movement. So lots of our employees are living west of the Beltway, so once Loudon starts stepping up, we, our competition is just getting greater. Next slide. All right, so our pay, to compare with the slide we just saw, we have now packaged ours up in multiple components because we have collective bargaining. So our pay for general non-bargaining employees, the 4.5% range movement. Now, you saw Loudon had five, most of the other jurisdictions had two, two and a half. We have always been a little bit slow on moving our ranges, but on average, our non-bargaining ranges will move 4.5%. And you'll hear a little bit more in a minute because we're making a little pay plan, pay plan change as well. The budget for pay-for-performance employees, which is still probably maybe a third of our non-bargaining workforce, is on a pay-for-performance plan, is up to 5%, so they can get anywhere between 0 and 7% based on performance. So to average a 5%, somebody is going to be getting below five, and somebody's going to be getting above five. And then those who are not in pay-for-performance have a 4.75% increase. And then you may all be familiar with the collective bargaining agreements that we recently signed, but labor and trades, the 4.75% increase with a 2% range movement. Police, they have a 2.5% step. They moved onto a step plan, and depending on where they are, they may be getting two steps in any one year. And for fire, they have a 4% step plan that they're moving into, and then if they hit the max there, they have a longevity bonus, which you see in some of the other jurisdictions as well. Next slide. It did mention a new pay plan. So what we have proposed is a new pay plan that would kind of bring us into better sync with our surrounding jurisdictions, which we just referred to. So we have historically had a big pay plan, and, and right here, it says 319 grades, and others have had anywhere between 25 and 40 grades. So it's really hard to compare your jobs across the region, and employees want to compare their jobs across the region. How would they sync up if they were in Fairfax or Alexandria? So we're trying to compress our plan down into 40 grades. Fairfax has done it. Fairfax has 40. I think Alexandria probably has about 25. And so it can be done, but it's, it will, it will, in the end, be a good place for employees to understand where their, where their jobs sync up in the region, but there'll be a little consternation for a short period of time. But again, it's easier for employees, and it's easier for us to look at pay in the region, so it kind of needs to be done. And then it also makes sense, as we move to a new payroll system, not to program 320 pay grades that are out of sync with the real world. So that's kind of some of the impetus behind it, make it a little bit easier lift, as we move into new payroll system. Next slide. All right, so probably the tougher part of human resources right now is recruitment, recruitment and compensation. We said this last year, we may be saying it for several years, but it's a very tight labor market, and it gets harder and harder to bring in a big pool of candidates for any of the jobs that we are posting it. So we have to look at more places, we have to turn over more rocks to see what's available, and then often we have to offer higher salaries to start. So lots of people in the region competing for the same great talent pool, and that talent pool is smaller. So we have to look different, and we have to stand out in the region. And it takes a little bit more creativity, but it takes a little bit more staff time as well. So sometimes hiring takes a little bit slower, we have to pay a little bit higher salaries, people have to be a little bit more patient, and sometimes we cause some compression. So we have to bring people in where we can get them, and then come back and address the people who are currently here who may feel left behind. So it does take a little bit more money to address those compression issues, but we work at it as best we can with the dollars we have, but we still have a ways to go. Next slide. The PRISM update. So this is, I should say PRISM Plus. We currently have PRISM. We're moving to PRISM Plus, but we are now moving all of our functions into one system. So in the past, we had a standalone recruiting system, so somebody would be hired, but then we'd have to more manually move them over into the payroll system. So this will sync up naturally. It'll go from recruiting, you're hired, you're moved over into the payroll system. So less individuals getting involved to make somebody get hired in one system, move over to the payroll system. When we're running the affirmative action plan, or we're looking for data that includes candidates and hires, it'll all be in one system, so it'll be easier to pull data. Career development, performance management systems have been kind of ad hoc, kind of put together on site, so we'll have a more professional performance management system. Training, which was part of the old PRISM system, but I think training has a little bit more flexibility now in the new system. Time and absence reporting, we can get some more information on time reporting, and it syncs up just like it used to in the past, but we have more systems that will maybe be more automated going forward on time and attendance. And then it's in the cloud, it's housed in the cloud, so it's a little bit more secure environment, so we have a little, little less worries about people getting involved and intercepting any of the data we have out there. And the man hours going behind it are enormous. Nobody really sees behind the scenes, but at least half of the HR staff is working on this system at any given time, and will be through the course of the summer to make sure we get this up and running without any hiccups.
So I'm going to interject at this point, because I asked Maria and Marcy to put this together. You don't see it at all, but over the last month or so, we've been averaging across DMF and HR 1,300 hours per week. That's a huge time commitment. You may be asking a little bit why sometimes the DMF staff seems a little crispy. But we have not updated our ERP systems since 2006, and technology has changed immensely. And you all know through the work we had with our, one of our previous auditors, adding functionality to PRISM, it is the lifeblood of what we do. And so I just know when I call Marcy up, what I do is I fortify myself with a bunch of pillows and sort of get ready, because I say, "Marcy, how much would it cost to do a bonus?" And she goes, "I don't have the..." No, she, she's very good about it.
Nothing, nothing till August.
But it's very, I just want to let you know, until we get to August of this year, we have people doing two or three jobs. I'm not asking you to do anything about that, I just wanted to let you know that for background.
No, we're just saying no a little bit more, or we have to move a little bit more slowly, but we're, we're getting it done. Next slide is turnover. We show you the turnover statistics every year, some good news, some bad news stories. This is the last three years, or this year projected. We've heard a lot about police and sheriff having a tough time. You can see their numbers are improving. At the same time, fire departments having a little bit tougher challenge getting people on board. So it's not a win-win story across the board, but things are turning the corner for police and sheriff. The general workforce is a little bit flat. That could be read as a good thing or a bad thing, but it, it's still a tough labor market out there, and we have to keep our eyes on it. And we show it, total turnover and turnover without retirement, because retirement is going to happen. It's almost unavoidable. We can keep people another year longer, another two years longer, but we can't really change their whole flight path because they look forward to retiring. Next slide. Healthcare, and, you know, Kristin is here if we have any healthcare questions. We show you the premium increases in the region. We've had a couple of good years in the past. COVID allowed a lot of people to not venture out into the doctor's offices, so we probably even had a downturn for a while. But healthcare increases are going back up, employees are back out and taking care of their health as we want them to, but there comes with a cost. It could be inflationary, it could be a lot of reasons, but it's going up. But we are not alone. Up a little bit more than Alexandria and Fairfax, but Prince William is leading the pack, and they also do not have as generous of a cost-sharing arrangement for families. So we tend to take care of our family coverage here, but premiums will be going up a little bit this year. Next slide. Showing you what that means, because employees hear a 7% increase, and they hear a 4.75% pay increase, and they think they're losing ground. So the 4.75 is on their annual salary. It's a much bigger number than a 7% increase on a monthly premium. That's several hundred dollars. So for an individual who, who participates in our, our most-used plan, an individual employee per pay would be getting a $4 or $5 increase on their healthcare premiums, and the employee would be getting, or the family would be getting a $17 increase per pay on their healthcare coverage. Though, although we don't really want to incur all these increases, it's not wiping out their annual pay increase. So their pay may look more like something you see at the bottom of that slide with the annual salary of about $80,000. They'd be getting about a $3,800 increase if they're meeting expectations, and if they use family coverage, they'd have about a $450 annual increase for healthcare. And we do have a really good health plan, so they are getting good coverage for that increase. Next. You've also heard a little bit about the new retirement, new retirement plan proposed. So about a year ago at this time, the board sanctioned the manager with looking at the package of benefits to make sure we had the right package to recruit the next workforce. The biggest component of that package, or the biggest dollars being spent in that package are on the retirement system. So we contracted with Aeon Consulting, who helped employee work group look at different retirement plan designs. The program that's being recommended to start in January- The program that's being recommended to start in January is for newly hired, general, non-bargaining employees. It would provide them a more, more of a defined contribution plan, but also have a defined, defined benefit component for the security that a defined benefit plan offers. But a defined benefit plan is constructed to reward, reward long-term employees, so employees who are here 25 or 30 years, which is more common in the public, public safety section. And the general employee workforce tends to come and stay and then move on. So our tenure in the general workforce is about eight years. So they don't get the full value out of the defined benefit plan, which is structured to reward longevity. So we've comprised it as a defined benefit plan with a defined contribution component that looks more like that, what they would see in the private sector. And that's where we're recruiting from. We are bringing in those general employees from the private sector. So they'll know what this, this plan looks like more readily than perhaps public safety employees would. But it does have the secure component and the very portable piece that they can invest their own money and they can take it if they leave much more meaningful to a, a private sector type employee that was what we're, we're recruiting against right now. And in the region, if we look around, it looks a lot like VRS. It's actually more generous than VRS, which covers the majority of this state. It has the lowest employee contribution amongst our peers out of Fairfax and Alexandria and Prince William. And so we're hoping employees will think this is a good thing. They don't have to pay as much as the region, but they'll get a great retirement system in return. And we can talk about that at any point in time. Next slide. Organizational development, which is under Jason's leadership. Organizational development is composed of many things, but the hot buttons these, these days are mentorship programs. It's the best way to grow your internal workforce. It lets people learn from those who have gone right before them and you're paired up. So it started with a program in police. Jason's team has expanded it to sheriff and fire. And then we do all kinds of little ones for general employees. So Diane Crash will come up and talk to you later, but she has a great one for the ERG that she handles, the women at work. And so there's a lot of other little mentorships, but it's a great way to grow employees in the, in the fields that they want to be in. Leadership development programs, and Jason can go in depth if you want to talk about any of those. We do have coaching. We have a cadre of onsite coaches, internal employees who are trained coaches, and we have a cadre of external coaches that we can bring in at any point in time for anybody. The new Prism system is allowing them to enhance their career development site. So you'll see more improvement for employees who just don't know where to go. And that system will let them navigate online on their own personal time, think about where they want to end up in this organization. So a more robust career development site. And then 360 leadership feedback is kind of coming back into play. So you'll see more of that than we used to do at five or six, you know, years pre-COVID. And so it's coming back into play. But all of those are available should anybody here, any department want to take advantage of them. Our focus on equity. We did talk a little bit about the mentorship programs and that is a great way to help with internal equity. We are going out and doing more job fairs or career fairs than we've done in the last five to 10 years. So we are out there at different locations. We're going to places that we haven't been. And so you'll see, or, or the community or beyond, this community will see us out at these fairs. We've talked to you about the blind screening process where candidates can get moved forward in the organization for the interview panel. And we'll remove any identifying information that might tell you the race or ethnicity of the candidate. We have diverse hiring panels. We have always had diverse hiring panels. We probably always will have diverse hiring panels, but we're making sure that people on those panels are now trained in bias. And so there's more training going on for those hiring panels. Jason's team has created a lot of training for managers and he can talk to that also if you need more information on that. The ERGs, the employee resource groups that have been around forever, but are more, more in number now. They've always had one for the Hispanic workforce, the African-American workforce, but now we have them for new parents, for people taking care of parents, for Asian-American. So it's not, we're not excluding people. Everybody's welcome to join any of those ERGs, but those ERGs are 10 heading towards 11. So there's a lot of groups for employees who come on board to affiliate with and feel like they can learn more about the organization. And then Jason's team is working on new, new hiring manager training so employees feel good about talking to the candidates and making them understand what this organization's about. It's more about marketing now than it ever has been before. It's just not people will come here hoping for a job. You really have to reach out and find people. Next slide. That may be the last slide.
I think it is.
So we are happy to take questions, any one of us, if there's anything we can.
Thank you very much. We do not have any commissions and we might catch up on time. So it's coffee, your lights on?
Yeah. You know, I appreciate the, the information on literal pay and health insurance. Can we talk a little bit about what is our PTO and vacation policy as well as paid parental leave?
Sure. I watch me look at Kristin every now. We do not have paid time off. That's the private sector. We have sick and vacation that's accrued every pay, and it varies based on your years of service. So all employees will accrue four hours of sick per pay, but your vacation depends on your years of service. So new hires come in at five hours of vacation accrued per pay, going all the way up to eight hours at the manager, division chief level, or based on years of service. So you know, after three years, five will become six. Is it three years again for six to become seven?
It's, it's six to move up to the next level.
Okay. So those are all in our, I reckon we're happy to get them, but based on years of service, you'll move up. The maximum being eight hours for vacation.
Is that competitive in terms of what other localities are doing?
You know, we just bumped up maybe just, might be, not be the right word, five years ago, two years ago? From, for new hires to go from four hours to five hours because new hires are really looking for more paid time off.
Yes.
Doesn't mean it can't go up again, but we also see people who stay here for a long period of time are building up a sizable leave bank and it gets almost hard to use at a certain point in time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the paid parental, and again, I might be looking over at Kristin, we offer 10 weeks of paid parental leave. We were the first in this region to offer paid parental leave. All of our peers have caught us and perhaps leapt over us because I think 12 might be more the norm. But out of our 10, we allow you to use two for paid family leave reasons. And that may not be the norm in the region. But a new parent, somebody having a child for the first time, they have 10 weeks and they can use it, you know, for any period of time after that child is born. Employees who are not having a new child or adopting a child have two weeks that they can use for reasons under the Family Medical Leave Act.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Yeah, I think, you know, second to the literal salary and pay, I think especially younger workers are looking at PTO as, or I guess vacation time. I, I consider it all kind of the same, but as the next most attractive thing. And so I think, you know, as we, as we think about recruitment tools, I think five hours per pay period, that was higher than I, what I was getting in the private sector. And making that known, I think, is a really appealing thing for people. And then my next question, I think, is probably shared by many of my colleagues is on the, the proposed new retirement system. I think just if you could say a little bit more about how it works, I think retirement is confusing on its own, the way that it is currently set up. And to add in a new plan, I think my questions are on whether the existing system stays in place and you would still have the option to go into the full pension system if you are a new starting employee. Or if you are, you know, kind of, if that option goes away and, and this is, becomes the only option. And then I think maybe even just walking concretely through, like if you were a new person starting, staying for five years, which is when I believe the pension, the current existing pension vests for being able to, to take your benefits out when you eventually retire, you know, like what are the differences between what you're, you're looking at?
So the retirement system probably is the most complex benefit we have.
Yeah.
Some of it is the IRS has a lot to say about retirement system. So we have a lot of rules that have to be followed. Right now, we have a plan for new hires in the general workforce and the public, extends to public safety as well. But it's primarily a defined benefit plan. And for the general workforce, we put a defined contribution plan next to it. Public safety, and there's an accrual rate. So based on your years of service, you accrue so much credit towards retirement. The public safety component is a higher accrual rate and they make a higher contribution. But for general employees who don't stay or normally stay those 25 or 30 years, and even public safety is not staying 25 or 30 anymore either, but they used to stay that long, to make the general workforce feel rewarded similarly, we put a defined contribution next to their defined benefit plan because it has a smaller accrual weight, right? But then they have a defined contribution plan, which is very, very portable. So after 30 years, somebody in the general workforce today would leave with 51% of pay in the defined benefit side. If they were in public safety, they would be leaving with 78 or 80%. So there's almost a 30% gap. That's why we created this little defined contribution plan that the general workforce got as well. And if you leave at any point in time, if you leave after 10 years in general workforce, you'll get 17% of pay plus whatever is in that defined contribution plan. So, you know, it does reward you along the way, but the defined benefit plan really rewards longevity and the general workforce has not really been staying 20 or 25 or 30 years. Going forward, we want to maybe stand out and make sure we can bring in the employees that we're attracting from the private sector. And anybody who's been in the private sector, even what we're showing you today is extremely generous because they tend to match what employees put in. So if employees put in 5% of pay, your private sector employer may, if they're generous, match 5%, dollar for dollar, or they may match half of it. So they may be putting in 2.5% of pay. So what the county designed or what this workforce designed was not any reduction in county dollars at all, but something that employees can contribute less of their own money to, but feel like they got a really good retirement package. So right now, employees, general workforce puts in 4% of pay for the bigger package on the defined benefit side. And this new plan, they would have to put in 2.5% of pay, but still get that secured defined benefit plan paired with a bigger defined contribution plan so that they can control more of their own investments. Because you know, when the market's going great, everybody wants to invest their own money. When the market's not so great, they don't want anything to do with it. That's why it's two pieces put together. So there's a secure piece that they can't really touch, run into the ground, and then they have their own money that they can invest if they're feeling good about it. And then after seven or eight years, when they leave, the defined benefit piece won't pay them a monthly check unless they leave it here and can collect on it when they go. But there's also a piece, all their contributions could be refunded to them. There's a couple of different ways to handle your money in the defined benefit plan, but they'll have the defined contribution plan, which looks like something they know, they can roll it over to an IRA, they can leave it here, they could still manage the investments, it will still grow. So it still has the same thing that they would get in their private sector job, just a little secure component added to it. The reason you cannot have choice, according to the IRS, is you have to put two plans side by side with the exact same contribution on the employee's part.
Okay.
So if we want to have two plans side by side, they would have to have the same contribution level. So the current plan at 4%, the new plan at 4%. So that probably won't cause employees to make too much of a change unless they feel strongly that they want to be in a defined contribution plan. So it may not, it may not give them what they want. It may add confusion. It may have to be restructured if we want to put two plans side by side. It's an additional administrative burden because now somebody has to manage two plans. So going forward, we are proposing one that we thought would give them more that they would get in the private sector. It might give them more than they get in the region because VR, this is way better than VRS. And so if they realize that they're not going to be here 20 or 30 years, this might be a plan that is more attractive to them and we will stand out a little bit in the region and they'll feel, they won't feel like they're losing anything that they could have gotten in Fairfax or Alexandria. I started here 25 years ago. I came from the private sector and my, one of my first questions, and nobody in this room has been here as long as me, was do I have to be in this plan? I want to be in a defined contribution plan. I had no choice. You know, fast forward to where I am today, it's fine, right?
It's way better.
But back then, I wanted to invest my own money. I came from the private sector. I had a 401K. I was getting a 50% match on my dollar. I knew what I was doing. I was only going to be here for a little while. Lots of people will say the same thing. Couple of the people here are only going to be here for a little while and they'll say, it's a great place to work. But when you're bringing people in, they want to see what they're familiar with.
Yeah.
And defined benefit plans are only in like the auto industry.
Kyron.
Oh, hi, Ron. So we, in order to make any changes to our defined benefit system, we have to have the actuary look at it. It's in code. We cannot make any changes without the actuary weighing in. So even though Aon Consulting helped the work group, this information all goes to Kyron, the actuary. And so the actuary looked at, is this plan going to have any impact, this new plan have any impact on the old plan? And so what they came back with is even though the contributions are a little bit lower, it's not going to have an adverse impact on our current plan. Our current plan is pretty well sustained on its investments only. The dollars going in are not necessarily driving that success. It's the investments. They're invested conservatively. There's an investment committee that does them, but it's a big pot of money and the investments are what's keeping that plan going. So they said they don't see any adverse impact going forward. And if there was anything that it showed a little tiny blip out about 20 or 25 years where maybe they were running neck and neck. But right now, I actually think this plan, new plan, might save a tiny bit of money for the next 20 years, but there's no telling, you know, how the investment world will be. But they make assumptions and they are assuming that our investments earn 6.75%. So that's what they're paid to do. And at that, that total rate of return, this plan will be fine for the next 20 or 30 years and it won't impact the old plan at all.
I did want to add one thing because this is, I know is a very sensitive subject and we spent, the board gave us direction in two years ago to look at this. It's taken a lot of time. I did not actually include the language in my proposed budget. I'll be bringing it to you probably later spring, early summer, once Marcy and the HR staff have a little bit more space and we'll have public hearings on that and an opportunity for employees and everybody to come forward and testify. But one thing is, and if I get this wrong, Marcy, let me know, this will allow employees to make a decision that will let them keep a little bit more money in their own pocket if they choose to do that right at the beginning. Because what I've been hearing from employees is they appreciate the fact that 30 years from now, there'll be a great benefit, but they would like to have a little bit more in their own pocket to decide on what they're doing.
Okay.
I, I will, I will yield while pondering my long-term future and on a young people's mental health note, just say that it's also very stressful to think about when you don't really believe you're ever going to be able to afford to retire. So I very much relate to the idea that 30 years from now is not nearly as relevant as being able to afford my rent today.
Right. Exactly. All right. Thank you. All right, colleagues, I had hoped to finish at 4:45 here. I will, we'll go through with questions, everybody, but please let's try to keep them short if we can. Matt, your lights on?
Per your, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll follow up on the retirement plan and who we'll share that with, because it sounds like, you know, we got our unions and I want to figure out who that would apply to.
It does not apply to anybody who's covered by a collective bargaining agreement. That would, any changes to those retirement plans would have to be negotiated in that context. So this is only non-bargaining unit employees.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. And then I think in the interest of time, I do know that you have brought forward some proposals, looking at our employee groups, particularly with recruitment for our police. And I think that's enough said. I'll just want to follow up there as, as we work towards finalizing and the overall cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Can you share a little bit about housing support for our employees and how that's changed over time, both in what we're offering and whether people are using it? I think we've had some conversations about workforce housing and just enabling more people to live close to work. So how many people do live in the county? Has that changed? Has that changed a lot? And who's using the benefit?
What has changed over time?
How many people live in the county? How many of our employees live in the county? And how many are accessing our live-work benefit?
So, we looked at employees who are living in the county. It's pretty consistent year in and year out. So, we looked at it by segments. The police force, about 36% of our police officers live in the county. That's been pretty steady, steady over time. Fire and sheriff, much lower numbers. I think it's 15% with fire and maybe 12% with sheriff. Remember, our fire employees do not necessarily need to live in the county. Their jobs allow them the ability to live elsewhere. They're not, you know, they're here 24 hours. They have a place to stay. So, it's a different environment. And the general workforce. We have that. I don't have it on the top of my head. But it's been pretty steady year in, year out. New employees coming on board, or even, you know, public safety, they would like to live here. The numbers now are a little bit more daunting than they were five or 10 years ago. You know, the, even the interest rates on home loans are a little bit, you know, high. And so, there's lots of things working against us. We do see the rental grants being used, less on the homeownership grants, but they are turning the corner slightly. So, maybe some people are feeling a little bit better about buying in the county. But the numbers have been pretty consistent.
Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Takas.
Very quickly, because it helps me structure my, my, my thinking about the retirement plan. So, eight years is the average time that, that employees stay in.
General employees.
In general, employees stay in service. Has this been trending up or trending down?
That's been pretty consistent. We look at this every year, and it's kind of always hovering in the eight to nine years in the last.
Okay.
Five-plus years, I would say.
So, with other words, this hasn't been responsive to the up and down and the, and the competitiveness otherwise. So, the, the time, the time that people stay with us is pretty stable.
Yeah, we would love for them to stay longer. Sometimes now with a tight labor market, you're hoping to get somebody that'll come in for two or three or four years. Doesn't mean they can't contribute quickly, hit the ground running. We would love people to stay longer. There's a cost to turnover. You have to bring new people on board and train them. Public safety will stay longer. That's the nature of their job. If you're a firefighter, there's not a lot of private sector, you know, people looking to hire firefighters. So, there's more choice for the general workforce. And salaries speak loudly sometimes. And then the commute in, you know, if you're not living here, the commute in can get costly and.
I understand all of this, but the question was whether this has an impact on how long people stay in this, in service here. And it's pretty stable. So, that's an interesting fact for me. The second thing is the, going from 319 grades to 40 is a daunting task. It's also an important financial shift in the system, right? When is this going to be completed and how?
We do have the plan completed. We have not communicated it wide and far yet. But what means where people thought they were in an individual class and an individual grade, they may be sharing it with somebody that has a very similar situation, pay grade, pay responsibility. So, it'll be a little different for employees who thought they had maybe a unique grade and step in a much bigger plan, it'll be shrunk down. But it will be easier for them to understand internal movement and easier for them to understand movement if they want to move the, out of the organization to another jurisdiction.
This would add to, to range movement ability, right? So, we would have more space to.
Okay, so, the new pay plan, there is range movement, but it's not the same across the board. Not, each of those 40 grades will move 4% or 4.5%. Some of them will move 2%, some of them will move 1%, somebody else might move 5% because we're now trying to get them in a system that makes sense for what it looks like in this region.
So, the fiscal impact of that is for now relatively low, while the organizational impact is relatively high.
It is really low.
Okay, thank you. That was enough.
Okay, thank you. Quick question. Do we have information on turnover for our neighboring regions? I think turnover is really interesting. Look, I'd be real interested to see what, how's it doing in Alexandria, Loudoun?
Yeah, we'll see what we can get from them.
I would love that. Thank you so much. I think that's it.
Yeah, I'm going to actually take this moment.
Yeah.
Because I want to let you know, because for, especially for our new board members, that you've been asking questions during the work sessions. We have people behind us who are scribing the questions. And we actually have a list of them. And I think we're around 20 questions at this point. You will start getting written responses this week to you. We try to get them to you before you make your decisions. And that seems to be the wisest approach, rather than letting you make your decisions and then send the information later.
Extraordinary.
All right, thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. No, and thank you for all the, all the work. Sorry to hear how hard everybody has been working. Libraries is next. All right. Thank you, Marcy. Marcy, thank you.
I have to leave before the bagel gifts arrives.
Are those heavy?
I know she always brings gifts. Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I haven't told our new board members.
Diane Crash.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Diane always brings, Diane always brings gifts.
I bring gifts.
Yeah.
And.
Excuse me. Row number three and row number four, please move up.
Yep.
Come on, come on. Henrik over there, you have to come up too. No, no hiding.
No hiding. So, two people are right back. I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just standing up because I've been sitting a long time.
Yeah, I understand.
You have another one tonight?
Excuse me?
Yeah, we have a public hearing tonight.
I'm standing up in honor of me, Diane Crash.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. They're standing up in honor of me?
Hard to believe, huh?
Oh, thank you, Miguel. Yes.
Actually, it's just good to stretch.
Yes.
No bow tie? Leonard?
No. He's, he's casual today.
He's casual.
All right, so, everyone knows who's been doing this with me for a few years. By the way, tomorrow, April 3rd, is my 18th year anniversary working for Arlington.
Wow.
So, more on that in a second. Thank you.
Did anybody have that in the pool?
No. Now, they would have bet on a much shorter tenure. But that's a conversation for another time. So, this is a book talk that's coming up in May, May 14th. Jasmine Ward is a two-time National Book Award winner. It's going to be a terrific conversation. And so, I'd like to invite each of you to, to read it. And Matt, it's probably not appropriate bedtime reading. So, this is for you. Brown Bear, Brown Bear, What Do You See? For your, like, three months now.
Diane, are you using taxpayer dollars to provide gifts to the county board?
Foundation, right?
I bet it's friends of the library.
It's friends, and that came from the Bank of Crash, actually. So, it was a big favorite with my boys, Once Upon a Time, big favorite with the youth services librarian. So, can't have too many copies. It's a, it's a classic.
Thank you.
So, thank you all for having the session this afternoon. It's always a pleasure, actually, for us to be here with you. It's a great opportunity to look back at the year and to anticipate the upcoming one. I'm joined today by Ann Gabel, who is the deputy director, Sarah Davio, who is in charge of ordering and managing all of our collections, Rachel Pollan, who is our budget analyst, Annalisa Alprin, who is our comms specialist, Laurel Takama, who manages the library downstairs, as well as the detention center library, Rebecca Case, who is responsible for cataloging, Leonard Thompson, who is chief of public service, Tamisha Thorpe, who is a management analyst, Miguel Ruiz, who is at Columbia Pike, Karen Joshi, welcome back, who is an assistant chief in public service, Heather Scott, also an assistant chief in public service, and Henrik Sundqvist, who is our graphic artist and works with the comms and marketing team. So, again, thank you for this session this afternoon, and thank you to the board and to the manager for the support over the last year. In addition to tomorrow being an anniversary, this year is my 50th, five-zero, in the library profession. And while I've seen a lot of changes in the profession, notably, there are no card catalogs anymore, for those of us who remember those, I can say with a lot of pride how much I've enjoyed serving the community I grew up in. And a friend of mine recently said, "If you love what you're doing, you'll never work a day in your life." And I think that's absolutely true of the profession that I more or less landed in, but have never regretted. So, thank you all for having this time with us this afternoon. The first slide is the mission statement and the, our promise. And I, all of those statements are important. I think my favorite one is the one at the bottom. Create opportunities for an increased understanding of our world, of our community, and of each other. We do that every day through the collections that we select, the programs we host, the meeting rooms that are filled always with lots of people doing great things in the community. So, I think that our role as a hub for the community, the heart of the community, the connector for the community, is a role that we do take very seriously. And we operate with a lot of heart and empathy and with a spirit of inclusivity for everybody across the community. And we'll talk more about that. If there's a key message, we are fully back from the pandemic. Those of you who remember the trials and tribes, we lost a lot of staff. I think close to 50% of our public service staff. So, it was a couple of years of rebuilding. We also lost 20,000 active users. And we are happy to say that we, as of today, have more than 90,000. So, that's, I believe, our highest, certainly in my tenure of 18 years. We are headed toward close to 3 million point seven checkouts of both physical and eBooks. Our winter reading program was the highest ever, and that's usually a family, teens, young people event. So, we just feel like we've really come roaring back. And because we're less worried about building back the patrons, and we're very grateful for all of the Arlington patrons, and they stuck with us and they were patient with us, it's also given us some bandwidth to look at programming for the less fortunate in our community, some of the community members who don't have the income status that some of the others of us enjoy. So, we've done a lot of programming and a lot of outreach to some of the areas in the county where the resources are not as plentiful. We have a program tomorrow night, weathering with Dr. Arlene Duronimus, who 40 years ago tapped into something that all of us are now slowly realizing that environmental factors and, and income and financial health affect our lives in very, both serious and subtle ways. So, that's going to be a terrific conversation, which I'm hosting with Dr. Ruben Fargies, our public health officer. Next slide, please. I've already given a couple of these statistics. Ann made me practice this next thing that I'm going to do. Okay, yes. All right, I really can do this. So, you'll see depicted there, a mobile checkout. That means that Mark, instead of worrying about something going to the shelf and having it checked out for him, et cetera, he can use this handy-dandy app, which is available for free on the App Store. And it looks like this, yep. And it's slow. So, okay, all right. I'm going to press the start button. Ann's being very helpful, really. She's, yeah, I'm nailing it? Okay, good. Mark goes, "Okay." Ta-da, finished. Yay, no fuss, no muss. So, I can go through the stacks of all of our locations and help myself. And I brought this book on purpose. It's the latest Tommy Orange. I am on hold, I'm, I'm in the queue, I'm number 35 or something. But because I used grab and go, if I go into a physical library, it's there on the shelf, and I don't have to wait. So, I can now remove my hold. So, it allows me, in essence, to jump the line. Not that I would ever do that. No, I have to actually go in and do something. Hmm, make a note. We can maybe think about that. Make a note. So, anyway, total programs, we've already done over the last year, close to 2,900 programs. And that's over and above, in addition to all of the storytimes and everything, which we do all of the time. But we've really been branching out in our outreach programs. And the 22204 is where we've been concentrating most of our outreach efforts and building partnerships. We have 11 partnerships, senior centers, as well as the bids, and, for example, the Green Valley Civic Association. So, a lot of terrific partnerships. And coming online very soon is a partnership with APA to do STEM programming for teens. So, we'll talk a little bit more about, about teens coming up. I also want to give a very brief shout out to Laurel Takama and her staff downstairs. That library has exceeded expectations. Close to 85, 90,000 walk-ins, checkouts. I was down there yesterday, and there was a whole group of moms and kids and caregivers in the free play area. It was really terrific. There are puzzles, there are computers, there are book clubs, any number of things. So, hats off. Thank you to Mr. Manager, who authorized our getting a youth librarian for that location because we anticipated a lot of activity, given the residential prominence in the area. But it's really, again, exceeded expectations, well worth the wait. And it's a really terrific space. And if you haven't renewed your library card lately, Laurel will be happy to take care of it. All right, next slide, please. Arlington Reads. When I came to the county in 2006, the one thing that I really wanted to do as, as the director and as someone working in a public library, I wanted to have a community reads program. And we started Arlington Reads, and this is our 18th year. And it's, it's been a terrific ride. We've often taken our theme from county board initiatives. That's how we got involved in, in the food safety movement a number of years ago. We've talked about immigration, and we've talked about threats to democracy. We've talked about the importance of the Constitution and voting and weather and change and climate, et cetera. This year, we're celebrating the centenary of James Baldwin. We've had two great programs already, one with Eddie Claude, who is a professor at Princeton, who wrote Begin Again. And last week, Anna Malika Tubbs, who wrote a book about the mothers of MLK, Malcolm X, and James Baldwin. Really riveting conversation, terrific evening. And often, we are able to partner with Marymount and do an afternoon program with the students there. 300 students read Dr. Tubbs's book, and the conversation with the students was terrific. All right, teens. I listened in on, next slide, please. On Jane's presentation earlier, Jane's done an incredible amount of work with teens. We've been fortunate to provide some assistance, especially with the evening programming at TJ and Arlington Mill. She and I have been talking over the last few weeks about creating a group where we can expand her efforts to meet the needs of teens where they are and also working with DHS. I think when we look at teens, I've been talking across the system a lot with teens. We've had a couple of teen takeover events, which I'll show you a couple of slides from later. But basically, we have space. We have space where teens can be and not have people hovering over them. We also have terrific collections. And we're working on making some of these collections, especially with material that might be more sort of self-help oriented, available for teens just to pick up. And if they leave and don't bring it back, that's okay. But it's providing them a resource so they don't have to feel uncomfortable about asking an adult for something that might be highly personal. We have teen book clubs. We've started doing work with the teens, asking them to volunteer and increasing their skill levels so that they can grow with us, recognizing they have different schedules and they can't, like, come to the library every Tuesday at 4 o'clock. So, we've been working on being flexible with them and asking their opinion about the teen spaces, which I've talked to Mark, wanting to augment those. We don't have space-space in every location, but where we do, we would like them to be defined teen spaces so that the teens don't feel lumped in with the babies. And, and that's an ongoing project. I did a program a couple of weeks ago, I just want to call attention to the lower left, the Center for Family and Youth Advocacy, Devanshi Patel's group. I did a morning program. Patel's group. I did a morning program facilitated by two teens. They were showing up at 10:30 on a Saturday morning to talk about book banning and the importance of the First Amendment. And there were two librarians, I was one of them, there just to facilitate. But there were 20 kids who showed up. And I thought it was a great, a great event, and applaud Devanshi's efforts in this area. It was, it was terrific learning experience. And again, one that we're continuing to look at. I will be working with Jane and Anita and others, but also across the county staff, in, in my department, rather, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of teens, and mostly checking in with them. I've used the term, we are sometimes the third adult. We're not the parent, we're not the teacher, but we are someone who can listen to them, even if they just want to talk about, you know, their disappointment not getting into a college, which was actually an example from a couple of weeks ago. Next slide. Books, lots and lots of books. The, the YA collection, we have terrific selectors for YA material. That's the Young Adult Collection. That's the collection that's really, if you're talking about hard-hitting issues, they're covering everything. They didn't really have YA when I was a youngster, and it's probably, it's really come into its own after books like The Outsiders, which probably seems like a classic, an antique at this point, although it's about to open on Broadway. Do you have your tickets?
Let's go.
Okay, let's go. All right, next slide. Equity in our work. We've been hosting naturalization ceremonies for the last few years. Last year, Tanya Tolento was the keynote. This year, we're delighted to have Mr. Karen Tonis be the keynote. It's an incredibly moving experience. Libby did it with me a few years ago. If you haven't been part of it, having that privilege and seeing these, these people take such pride in coming, becoming a part of, of this country at a time when the national dialogue doesn't always appreciate the contributions of people from other countries. So we're looking forward to that. Next slide. Band Books. Band Books Week is acknowledged in September. This year, we hosted Art Spiegelman with his classic Mouse. It was an event that was standing room only. And a couple of weeks ago, my colleague, Leonard Thompson, did an interview with Professor Eddie Claude to kick off our celebration of James Baldwin. Next slide, please. We've been partnering with a group called United Against Hate, which is the US, the Eastern Division of the US Attorney's Office. They've held two programs, one talking about crime against LGBTQ plus individuals, another program at Sherrlington, conducted entirely in Spanish, attended by people who have actually had issues with law enforcement, and creating that safe space for challenging conversations, where people are being extremely vulnerable and, and personal about their experience. Kudos to the staff for making those opportunities possible. Next slide. The Shed. The Shed. The Shed was actually something that came out of a county board initiative some years ago. I think Mr. Vice Dad was very involved in that. And one of the recommendations was to create a free lending service for gardening tools. No, you can't get a power saw. Or a sit-on lawnmower, whatever those things are. Can't get that, but you can get rakes and hoes and other kinds of things to do, a garden in your patio or your backyard. It officially opened last week. It was open at 10 o'clock this morning. I spoke with the volunteer. It was raining, but she was prepared. She was wearing her poncho. She was ready to go. We have the shop. If you haven't visited the shop, please do so. It's so terrific. I teach a class there once a month. You can bring your appliances. You can learn to sew. You can knit. You can hang out. We're increasingly wanting to turn that space as well over to teens, for them just to have a teen night. Get some pizza, bring in some, some sodas, and do whatever. You can do your homework. You can talk. You can play around with the equipment. You can light the glow forge on fire. Hey, why not? That actually happened, but it wasn't a teen. But the shop has been, again, exceeded expectations in terms of what we were hoping to accomplish. And there's a lot going on there. And then our Friends Bookstore. Rebecca Case is responsible for the look and feel of all of them. They actually look like being in a used bookstore, when you're, when you're able to use them. And it's part of the partnership that we have with the Friends of the Library. Next slide. Holiday, excuse me. It's the Human Library, which is returning week after next. It'll be at the tail end of National Library Week, which begins on Sunday. And it's, I participated last year. You're actually a human book, and you share your experience. You allow someone else to walk in your shoes. And after six hours of nonstop conversation, it was incredibly affirming. So it, we got great reviews last year from the participants. We've improved our registration procedures and et cetera a little bit for this year. But it's a great, I think you stopped by last year, Susan. Yeah. It, it was just terrific. Next slide. The Gift Nook. So the Gift Nook, we collected lots of items to give away in a two-weekend event in December, so that people who are in straitened financial circumstances have a chance to be independent and shop. And I, we heard over and over again, not only was the stuff nice and well-presented, kids could come in and be independent about making their choices. And it was one of those, you know, without fear of being shamed or embarrassed about where you are in your, in your finances. It was, it was incredibly, again, gratifying. And it was the brainchild of one of our staff on the programming team. And anyway, we hope to continue and continue doing it. Next. We have a number of what I'll call niche services or concierge services, books by mail, inner library alone, and talking books. Talking books is part of the Library of Congress suite of services. Once upon a time, it was more sort of for the blind and physically handicapped community, but now it's really for, for anyone. And we had a little thing this year where books by mail, the, the kids in the youth services programs wrote notes, so that people who are alone and get a book by mail have a little note from someone from, from the library. And one more slide, I think. We've been doing a lot of work with the Detention Center. I think I mentioned Laurel is overseeing that. We've been bringing a lot of programming to them. We are redoing their collection with Rachel and Sarah, excuse me, Rebecca and Sarah's help. We've had writing workshops. We did an event with the poet laureate Courtney LeBlanc last fall. So I can't say enough, the residents there are so appreciative. They read the materials. They're reading along with us. And we've been having community conversations. And it's been so important to help them feel like they're not forgotten. Next slide. Okay, so we are asking for, this was not the one I was expecting. All right, that's fine. Yeah, okay. This is the one-time funding to support the reduction that we want to make. We want to collapse two of our workforces, Cherrydale and Glen Carlin, under one supervisor, which would still be a smaller unit than many of our units throughout the system. It's an efficiency that we've been wanting to do. We've done it many times in the past, when we've had vacancies at the branch manager level. I want to make it very clear, no one is losing their job. We will not combine those two units until somebody exits, and then we have a vacancy at the branch manager or one of those comparable levels throughout the system. So right now, today, and for the next several months, until there's a vacancy, it will be status. And we can talk about it again, but that's, that's what this represents. Next, please. Budgeting. Collections increase. I believe we have a request in for one-time funding. This shows the pattern of one-time funding over the last several years. I would love to have a conversation at some point about, instead of one-time, adding it to the base. I recognize this might not be the fiscal year for that. But the next slide will show that no matter how much we spend, the more we spend, the greater the use, the higher the circulation across teens, children, older adults, people my age, et cetera. Notice how I didn't say older adults and include myself. Just making sure if you're paying attention. So I want to say a little something about e-materials. And Sarah, Sarah can help me if I leave something out. E-materials, ebooks, audio. Audiobooks have changed my life. I listen to them all the time, all the time, all the time. We started very modestly. E-audios came to Arlington a few months after I arrived in 2006, and we had 83 checkouts. In 2008, we started featuring ebooks. We had 12 checkouts. Now, we're looking at over 1.4 million in a year. Talk about rate of adaptability, adoptability, rather. It's, it's been huge. And again, the more we spend on physical item book collections like this, and e-materials, the lower the wait time. It was, it was really getting up there in, in high numbers for a while. And now it's around 15. And that is a good space to be in. It doesn't mean that everyone will be patient and wait for it. But I think the fact that our circulation is so high across the board means that people appreciate the steps that we've taken. So we can go to the next slide, and we can go to the next slide, and we can talk about, just again, outcome measures. We've, we've begun working more assiduously on outcome measures, especially in outreach and some of the outreach programming. This is a very simple measure. The more we spend on collections, the lower the wait times. So we're calling that a positive outcome. We can discuss that another time as to whether or not that's true. But that's, that's an indicator of the collections, that's who we are. Yes, we're all these other things, but people, at the end of the day, expect the library to have a great collection that reflects the needs and the interests of the community. And hats off to Sarah, and to Rebecca, and to everyone in this room who makes that happen, including our wonderful community who recommend things all the time. And if they recommend something that we don't have, Sarah goes and buys it, right?
Absolutely.
Yes. No questions. Next slide. So I alluded to this a second ago. The second item is a vacant library assistant position, which we will freeze until such time as we need it back. And the librarian supervisor is the one I just referenced, with collapsing those two units into one, and it's still a smaller team than many of our teams. It's an administrative efficiency. We've done it before. There is no public impact. And we would like to memorialize it and, and do it permanently. Although, again, no one will lose their job until there's a vacancy. Okay? I want that really clear. And there may be people who still don't understand that, but it's true. No one will lose their job. Next slide. The Futures. The Futures of the Library Conversation is going to be an eight-week process. Again, this was something that we got with Mark's support and the board's approval. It was signaled in last year's budget. It will start, we have a meeting with the vendor tomorrow. The vendor is Accenture. We're meeting with them tomorrow. And we are, the first step is to have an invitation-only request of some 40 to 50 people in the community and some county staff to participate in a session of scenario building. And with those scenarios, we will then take them out to the community and begin to have concrete conversations about what the library of the future in Arlington looks like, given everything that's advances in technology and AI and differences in schools. I don't know if you were worried, but I was very worried about the article in The Times about school is now an option, and absenteeism being at an all-time high, including in our neighboring Fairfax. So not a great story, all the more reason to do more engagement with teens. But I'm really looking forward to the community conversations. The next slide. Crystal City, Columbia Pike, and the temporary to permanent staff conversion, which is something we've been working on the last couple of, couple of years. Crystal City Library, we ended our work with JBG Smith and the plan to occupy a ground floor space in, in the office building. For many reasons, that wasn't going to be optimum. But we had a great meeting with several of the residents in Crystal City civic associations about other options, leasing a space. If so, what would that look like? What's the size? We expect it to be a full-service library. So watch this space. We're not abandoning it. It may not come online as quickly as some of the residents over there. But I thought the conversation was, was really terrific. And I've talked with these folks many times over the years. Columbia Pike Library. The SunTrust Building is still standing, Mark.
The county board just approved the contract to demolish it. And it's hard to believe that the minute they approved it, the building didn't come down. But we're, we're going to start work on that.
We're working on it?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Because I drove by, and I was surprised to see it. So that'll be the future home of the Columbia Pike Library. I'm actually pretty excited about that. I know these things have a long planning timeline, but there's an opportunity to do more than the library, to bring in Black History Museum, potentially expand the space of the Center for Local History, to do something with the Historical Society, to have affordable housing on top. I mean, I think there are a number of potential uses and functionalities that we can enjoy from that. And so it's going to be a great, a great planning period. And then, permanent staff conversion, we would still like to complete that process. I think we asked for 18 positions, something like that. And we did about half of them in the last budget. We, we're open 430 hours a week. That's a lot. And we, we are managing, but we have to manage with a lot of temporary staff. And temporary staff don't have the skill set that some of our professional, many of our professional staff. That's one thing. But they're also, they, they are temporary. They have other lives. And so they're substituting. And so we really have to rely on the permanent staff to make the 430 hours work. And we spend a lot of time on that. But, but again, it's, it's just our annual plea to, to make that a reality. And then the final slide is, again, the teen spaces. We would really like to, to create teen spaces. This is Westover Library, where we engaged a group of teens to recreate and reimagine their space. And so they came in and did just that. So again, it's really important that teens feel closer to the adult end of the spectrum than the baby end, and giving them that responsibility and autonomy to realize that. Thank you. I'll take questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? We still have one more registrar to do today. So I welcome questions, just not long ones. Matt?
I think a couple of sentences, or a very quick question. Do we have a location for the frozen bacon position? Or is it?
It was Central Library. It was a circ, circ assistant in the Central Library. Yes.
Got it. And then, "Thank you for how beautiful we were." It's a good book. It's great.
Thank you.
All right, Maureen?
I just want to say a cute, fun story, which is my first ever time in Arlington before I even moved here, was in the Arlington Public Library. It was one of the like after dark at night things. And my teammate from college had already moved to Arlington. And we went, we played, we had Nerf gunfights, and we did crafts. And I just think what Arlington Public Libraries is able to do for the community is such a critical, important service. And I think to have the vision to set things like that up is so cool and so great. And I look forward to hopefully expanding that as we really come roaring back from COVID.
Yeah, thank you. That was a great program. It was called Adult Recast. And you had foursquare, and coloring, and puzzles, and all kinds of stuff. It was loads of fun.
So fun.
Great.
So fun. And, and young adults need fun things too, not just teenagers.
Agreed.
You know, I know there's a lot of focus on-
So do old adults, actually.
I was going to say, I mean, you know, I know there's a lot of focus on, on older adults and on youth, but there's a lot of people in the middle who are struggling for connections right now.
Great point. We have had some gaming nights, and we are continuing to look at that group. But it's a great reminder, and thank you. And I'll pass along your compliment to the staff. Great. Takas?
This will, this will be definitely part of the conversation we'll have on your strategic plan, your envisioning of the, of the library of the future. And I can say one thing, if somebody hasn't visited the shop in the Central Library, they should go and see that and, and enjoy that. I, I cannot imagine a more vibrant space. And this brings people back to the building, actually, to the place. And I have to say, the, the highest appreciation for the people working there. My biggest concern is the enormous expense for, for ebooks and for, for these materials. And I'm more than willing to support the effort, but we need to understand the dynamics here. So it's about $700,000 every year, right?
More than?
For overdrive.
Over a million. And to-
Most of that being one-time money.
Sarah? Yeah, please.
Okay. So we had $1 million that was dedicated to overdrive this year. Approximately $680,000 of that was from one-time money the board provided us for- Approximately $680,000 of that was from one-time money the board provided us for this year.
Yes. The reason why I'm asking is because I consider the library also as one of the bulwarks of digital equity, right? This is where people are actually accessing a lot more, have the opportunity to access. My wife was absolutely stunned by the type of databases that you are maintaining, you know, otherwise you would have to be a member of a university, et cetera, to be able to do that. It's not universal, but what we have here is absolutely stunning. The, my question is, what is the strategy of that? So how do we involve equity in the way we plan for our collection, basically?
Right. So when we're thinking about equity with collections, we're thinking about not just, we need to make sure that, first of all, like physically, people can access what they need when they need it. So maybe they have a reading disability, for example, but something like Libby can provide them with, they have really good dyslexia font. So maybe an eBook is a better option for somebody physically. Or through talking books, they need something, they can get Braille products through there as well as listening products. So we're trying to address sort of physical disabilities that can influence how people would choose to use the products. The other way we strongly think when we're doing our buying is, what voice is telling the story? Right? We want to make sure that everybody in the community, regardless of what their background is, can find a book in the library that matches what they're looking for. So when we are doing our buying, we are strongly considering books where, you know, is the author African-American, Latinx? What is their background, and are they telling their own story? And then when we do our book lists and our displays and things, we're highlighting those books to make sure people can find them, not just the people who want to see themselves reflected, but the people in the community who would love to read the stories of others that are not like them, to help improve their own empathy and to gain insight into what other people are thinking. So that's kind of the approach we take, is sort of a whole approach to how do people best use the collection? How can we best meet those needs?
I have to say that I've been able to monitor the way that also foreign language content, et cetera, was included in the expansion of three, this is the third year or fourth year of expanding and updating the collection, and I could literally see that, at least in the things that I understand, and I can imagine it's more than that. Glenn Carlin Cherrydale, there is no influence on the service of the library, no influence on the hours that the library is open, no influence of nothing. We have an actual, you know, example here, the J Library and the library here in this building are managed by one person.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
So I need a cute story, too. My favorite collection story is at Central, watching someone skateboard in, check out a screwdriver, tighten the wheel, turn it back in, and skateboard out. It's pretty cool. I have a question, which I have asked before, but I'm going to ask again, which is, in the future of libraries effort, are we going to be able to kind of look more broadly than just what we think of as a library today, sort of to third spaces, I would call them, whether they're nature centers or the Mocha pop-up or middle of the mall, or kind of just thinking about how to bring that spirit of innovation and connection that we have so well-done in the library branches today?
Yes. I mean, that's part of building scenarios as opposed to focusing only, well, this is what we have now, and how can we make this thing better? But to think more broadly about what's best for the community and how can we address digital inequities or income disparities, or the fact that not everybody can jump in a car and get to where they need to go. So it'll be definitely part of the conversations. I can't predict now what the invitees to that session will come up with in terms of the scenarios, but the goal is to be as broad and as innovative and as visionary as possible about the future of the library, given the complexities that we're dealing with in this community and across the country. So I would expect that, yes. Yes is my answer to your question. Yes.
Always open. Thank you. You know, I find myself, I've done a lot of these presentations, right? And it's just always impressive, always new, always exciting. So, I don't know if you think, I find myself thinking of the, what you're trying to do is, traditionally, people had, like, villages and town squares, and the town square was where it all happened, where everybody came together, they traded their sheep, their ducks, they got the newest news, they got medicine, everything. And that's kind of what, and then we've kind of lost that, you know? And that's been part of the whole, you had change in modern society, it makes people feel a little disconnected, and I think more and more libraries is kind of starting to fill that sort of town square function, and it's pretty cool to see how you keep adding things.
No, thank you. I think that's true. And a community like Arlington, I've been here since 1958, and it's changed a lot, but there's not, there's not a community square where everybody goes to watch the fireworks.
What did David Brooks call libraries?
Cathedrals.
Cathedrals. Cathedrals of democracy.
Yes. He did.
And that's pretty profound.
That's kind of what we're going for.
Yeah. Though that's, that's even nice, more than a town square, but I can't, that's all right, I can't compete with David Brooks. But thank you very much. And I, you know, obviously, you know, emergency preparedness is something I'm always kind of thinking about, libraries for London. I just will never forget during the pandemic, where all of a sudden, like overnight, your staff completely switched to helping out people, getting food and things, and my, one of my first sort of public was appearances as the chair live, after being all set, was going to the Central Library and looking at the huge warehouse, that everything was being used as a warehouse to put in the emergency gear that we needed. And you just turned on a dime.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. It's the staff. I have terrific staff. It's a privilege to work with them every day, and they make all of us better.
It's great. Well, whether it's a town square or a cathedral, we're in good hands. Thank you so very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much.
All right. We've got one more. Thank you so much for the patience of our Electoral Board and our General Registrar.
I warmed him up, Gretchen.
Yeah. She did.
I also saw you bring gifts, and I couldn't be, you know--
She's the only one who brings gifts usually. It's okay.
I brought the only currency I know, which are stickers.
Oh, yeah.
I did not pay for them. They were paid for by the state.
Wonderful. Have a seat. All right. I don't know, Mark, do you do the introduction? We're not really doing introductions, everybody's just, we're just going with it.
Gretchen is a power unto herself.
Yes, that's fine.
I don't know.
All right. Ms. Ryan Meyer, take it away. What an exciting year for elections we've got coming up, right?
So, as wave introductions, my name is Gretchen Ryan Meyer, and I am the General Registrar, and today we have with me Richard Samp, the Chair of the Electoral Board, and then we have our new Deputy Director, Alyssa Myers, in the audience. So, we are a separate constitutional office. The Electoral Board is a three-member board that is nominated by their respective political parties and appointed by Circuit Court judges for staggered three-year terms. They in turn appoint me, the General Register, for a four-year term. We are tasked with maintaining an accurate list of registered voters and administering elections in a fair, efficient, transparent, and equitable manner while adhering to federal and state election laws. I emphasize adherence to the law this year because much of our work and in turn our budgetary demands are prescribed by law. Next slide, please. Fiscal year '24 brought forward several new legislative requirements. Arlington was the first election in the state to run an election using ranked choice voting. This initiative was adopted by the county board. We joined Orange and Loudoun Counties to be one of the first three jurisdictions to make use of a new law that allows local electoral boards to request an audit on a race wholly contained in their jurisdiction, and we conducted a risk-limiting audit using the batch comparison method this last fall. In this type of audit, batches of ballots are hand-counted and compared against the totals reported by voting machines. We also had a new regulation that was passed down to us from the State Board of Elections that requires a full ADA assessment on all 54 locations be conducted annually. This does take us about 100 hours to complete, and we now must do it every single year. And then finally, we conducted an extra election this fiscal year, the presidential primary on March 5th. Next slide, please. Next fiscal year, our priorities are running a presidential election and expanding ranked choice voting to the general election. Presidential election is unlike any other election, the four-year cycle, each one is unique, making them difficult to prepare for. The one commonality is that over the course of the election, our office will interact with 80% of registered voters in Arlington, or around 135,000 residents, and a lot of these voters are inexperienced voters. They don't come out every year, so they take a little bit more time to help educate about our processes and laws here in Virginia, and this is one of the largest events in the county. To prepare, we plan on increasing voter services, outreach programs, and operations. So under voter services, we hope to expand the early voting locations and hours that are available for the November election. We also hope to expand the hours that our election phone line, our hotline, is available. In 2020, our phone lines were overwhelmed. At times, it felt like DDoS, or Distributed Denial of Service, attack on our office, and agents can spend up to 45 minutes with a single voter, informing them, reassuring them, are just getting to a place where a mutual acceptance of our election law. So we hope that by expanding hours, we can ultimately reduce hold times and provide greater services to voters, especially in the military, foreign service, and peace wars. We have around 4,000 voters located across the world, and they can find it very difficult to get ahold of us to discuss their specific, unique needs between the hours of 8 to 5. We also hope to continue to increase access to data and information, and this is important to help combat misinformation surrounding elections right now. We will expand our outreach programs and hopefully mail each voter information specifically about the presidential election and ranked choice voting, and hopefully create some voter process videos and conduct enhanced training for election workers and community organizations. Finally, just because of the sheer number of voters, the increase in the number of voters in a presidential election and the two-card ballot for ranked choice voting, we just have additional operational costs. We'll need to hire additional staff, temporary workers, and order supplies such as ballots. Next slide, please. We cannot be successful in delivering safe, secure, and accessible elections alone. We are a small staff with only 9.8 FTEs, and we rely heavily on support from federal and state partners, but especially from the support we receive from departments across all of Arlington County. I recognize that every year has budgetary challenges, and I wanted to briefly thank the county board and the county manager for their investment in things like increased security at facilities, cybersecurity infrastructure, emergency management, and employee wellness. We rely on these investments and the partnerships that we have in the departments across the county. I wanted to highlight briefly a new partnership this year. We hope to work with DTS to have a cybersecurity intern this fall, and this position will help with the completion of state-mandated election security standards, which were passed down to us two years ago. Next slide, please. While not officially a part of the operating budget, I wanted to briefly touch on the voting system replacement plan for next year. Funds are available as a part of the CIP, which I believe you will be discussing later this week, and we hope that the county board will continue to engage in this process by setting the minimum number of rankings for ranked choice voting, so by July, so that we can draft proposals. And then, once the presidential is wrapped, we will need to move quickly to review these proposals, schedule demonstrations, and deploy the new system, hopefully in time for the June 2025 primary. It is a very tight timeframe, so we will need to move as quickly as the procurement process allows us. Next slide, please. Here is a summary of our proposed changes this year. The increase is one-time funds for the presidential election, and the change in revenue is in part because of the presidential primary. We are partially reimbursed for those expenses from the state, and so the reduction reflects removing that reimbursement from our budget next year. And finally, next slide, please. As we look beyond fiscal year '25, I want to highlight a few areas of concern, starting with Arlington's polling places are at capacity. Arlington has the largest precinct in Virginia with 6,800 voters right now, and this is just down the street at Innovation School. Also in the top 30, we have precincts 119 and 110, both in Roslyn, and Arlington is not constructing many public buildings at the rate the residents are moving into the county. So what we're seeing right now in these numbers is a reflection of urbanization that happened in Roslyn several decades ago. Right behind Roslyn, we have Ballston, Virginia Square, and then Pentagon and Crystal City area. All of these are going to rapidly increase in population over the next couple of years, and the precincts cannot handle the influx of new voters. We cannot accommodate this growth without your support and help. We absolutely need the county board's help in helping tackle this problem. And then next, you can see that I submitted these slides last week. HB1 was vetoed by the governor at the end of last week, so that is not really a factor in terms of our election officer's pay, but I nonetheless want to highlight that the hourly rate for election officers is behind our neighbors. Both Fairfax and Alexandria increased their rate last year. And while I would never recommend somebody sign up to work the polls in order to make a lot of money, we do think that pay should compensate workers who have to take the day off work or maybe have to pay for additional childcare that day. Each of these election workers has to work a 15-hour day on Election Day, and we cannot run elections without hundreds of people in our community stepping up to do that for us on Election Day. And then the last thing I wanted to discuss was just the extension of the post-election process and elections in Virginia. So several recent legislative changes have extended the election. For example, we accept mail ballots up to three days after the election now. Same-day registration means that we are processing thousands of registrations after the election. I anticipate as many as 6,000 same-day registrations this November. Our staff has three days to get these entered, and that is all but an impossible task. So, the post-election canvas, where the Electoral Board audits election returns before certifying the election, will hopefully be expanded from seven to 10 days to accommodate processing these same-day registration applications. But once again, we are waiting for that legislative change to get fully signed by the governor and through the process. In addition, we will have to conduct a post-election audit on the US Senate race, which will happen the week of Thanksgiving. So when it's all said and done, Arlington's election will run from September 20th, the first day of early voting, all the way through to November 27th this year. This will be the fourth election in a 365-day stretch, meaning that the legislative demands that continually expand the election calendar continues to tax both our staff and our budget. With that, I will take questions.
Phew. Thank you. All right, colleagues. Questions?
Thank you. You know, with respect to the November 2024 election, is the proposed budget reflects, we are doing as much early voting as we are legally allowed to do, correct?
So there's, so what we hope to do with the money that the county manager has included in his proposed budget is we hope to be able to open a second site for the full 45-day period, in addition to additional sites those last two weeks, because even though early voting starts 45 days before election, we still find most voters wanting to vote in those final two weeks before the election. So we have to do what makes sense, because eventually we do run out of voters. Everyone will have voted by the time we get to election, the end of Election Day. But we don't know, it's really hard to predict how voters are going to engage with the process now that they no longer need a reason to vote earlier by mail. And so, it really is a guessing game over when and how they're going to want to vote in that six-week time period.
Yeah. Are we doing one or multiple Sundays of early voting?
There's at least one Sunday that we've put in the budget.
Okay.
So, yep. And as a reminder, the sites will be set by the county board, and the hours will be set by the Electoral Board. Statutorily, that is how the duties have been divided. So, thank you.
All right. Takas?
Correct. Talking about sites, so increase early voting sites. What is in, what are you proposing? Where are you proposing?
Yeah. So once again, it's the county board's decision to decide where these sites will, where we will be placed for early voting. We will be meeting with the county manager's office and Parks, and they can decide where is the best place in the county for an early voting location. Historically, where we have placed early voting sites and community centers run by the Parks Department, and we have tended to go to underutilized spaces, if you will, so that we don't impact the revenue stream for the Parks Department, or as little as possible, so.
But the $124,000 are accounting for one site?
No, it's one site and then two additional sites the final two weeks.
Okay.
And then just increase staffing, because-- And then just increase staffing because we'll have increased, we can only do, we can only process so many voters from our office down at the end of the hall. And so we'll need additional staff to manage the line. Otherwise, it will quickly become a problem for this end of the hallway up here, so.
Yeah, we are familiar with that.
Yes.
A good problem to have, but a problem nevertheless. Thank you.
It is a good problem to have, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Ryan Meyer, for your work. And mindful that we will also be doing all and will probably be engaging with the county manager. And I know our chair will lead us in making sure that all the safety steps that we have to take to make sure that this is a safe election are done. Is there anything, without, you know, needing to hear too much, Mr. Samp, anything that you wanted to add? Or Ms. Ryan Meyer, anything in closing? But I'd just like to thank our electoral board. It is not just for the glory that you're doing the job, so thank you.
I just want to say, I want to thank the county board for the support they have shown us over the years. And I can tell you from my time working with Gretchen that your money is well spent. We have a very well-operated office.
Great, thank you.
Susan. Can you say a little bit more about the outreach activities that are planned and whether, you know, whether that's fully sufficient? Whether additional funding would be helpful, how the community and the rest of us can support that outreach?
Yeah, I mean, with ranked choice voting, it almost doesn't, from what we've seen across the country, is it just takes a couple of years for the community to fully understand it. So, and the number one criticism anytime ranked choice voting is rolled out is that there isn't enough outreach. But it's one of those, you can spend 15 minutes talking to every single voter and they can, will still say there's not been enough outreach. So, so it's hard for me to say, is there enough outreach? Because like I said, with these infrequent voters, it doesn't matter. It is one of those frustrations of, we're here, we do this twice a year, every year, and they still don't understand the process. So it's a constant need for more education and outreach. But it's how do you capture people's attention in this very narrow timeframe of which they're thinking about the election while also running the election? Because that just is, it takes a lot of resources from our staff. So, and we don't, we have one individual assigned to outreach and that we don't have a full team that can really be amp up outreach programming in the six weeks surrounding an election. Because at that point, we're just trying to run the election at that point, so.
So, Mr. Manager, I know that in many of our other public engagement processes, we've partially cracked the code by kind of moving away from just mailers or websites to actual pop-ups or community engagement. Can you say a little bit about what support or collaboration might be available for that?
Yeah, no, so I know Gretchen Bryna has departed, but now Erica has stepped into that role, has a pretty close working relationship with our CAPE team and she makes great use of them. I'll let her speak to specifically the conversation she's had, but we partner a lot on that.
Yeah, and Erica, the new acting assistant county manager, actually was tasked to us in the 2020 election. So she understands our outreach and engagement and educational needs probably as good as anyone else in the CAPE team does. So we have started talking to other county departments, including the Parks Department. Libraries has always been a champion of our work. So anywhere we can leverage kind of this, leverage these other programs in the county, we want to do that. Part of the problems that we saw with our outreach and education last year is we just kept speaking to what felt like the same 200 people. And so, yeah, yeah. And so, so we really need to find a way, rather than letting them come to, and this has been talked about in the other presentations today, rather than letting them come to us, we need to find ways to get to them. We don't have a school cafeteria we can go to, though. So it is a little bit more of a challenging, challenge to, to get to where the voters actually are and where they want to talk about an election, because not everybody wants to talk about elections all the time, so.
Great. Well, I think it's our intent here to make sure you have everything you need to fully support, especially in a crucial presidential year where you do get to see 80% of the registered voters. We want to make sure that you have access to any and all resources that you feel are needed, so please don't be bashful. My last question is around the potential for an unusual level of scrutiny and conversation in this electoral year and maybe for Mr. Manager as well. What, you know, do we have all the resources in place for contingency planning, for security, for support? And is there anything else needed from this board to support you both?
So once again, we are, obviously, when it comes to security, there are things that we don't, to keep it secure, we might not necessarily want to talk about. But like I said, we are very fortunate in Arlington County to where we do have working relationships with our emergency management, our police department, our fire department, so that, I mean, we can plan for the things that might come our way. At the end of the day, there's, yeah, we, I mean, you can plan for it, but it's still, can you execute that plan when the emergency comes?
Sure, but in terms of all of our county and community resources to support you in that planning and potential execution, do you have what you need?
There are plans in place, yes.
Yeah, and we, so we went through this four years ago and Gretchen knows anything that she needs, she will get. And a lot of the things that she gets, you won't see.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's one of those things where we don't really ever want to see the police department on Election Day, but they are definitely there in the event that we do need them. But ideally, they are not getting called, so.
That's great. Just following up a little bit on that, are we getting, are you getting support too from the federal side? Like on AI kind of issues and stuff? Good.
Oh, on, yeah, so, yeah, so anytime we get to a federal election, we do get support from the federal agencies. So we do have FBI agent that gets assigned to us. We do CISA, the, I don't know what CISA stands for, it's under the DHS, but they are actually located in Bolston. So they've already reached out to us. And some of their staff, they're actually native Arlingtonians, so they have an investment in helping keep our election safe and secure, just as residents here in the community as a whole. So, so like I said, we do, there's always a lot of help. But once again, when you only have 9.8 FTEs who are here all day, every day, it's sometimes difficult to manage all the help that does come your way because we don't have deputy, I mean, we have one deputy director, but we don't have division chiefs or anything like that. And so managing these, all of these resources and help that's coming can be a struggle. But like I said, every presidential, we do it.
And do it pretty well, actually quite well. So thank you for all you do. One final question, something you said about the accessibility audit, the test to be done every year. So why does it take so long if I assume little has changed in a year?
Yeah, so once again, we are in negotiations with the Department of Elections and the state boards who understand specifically what they mean by these requirements. But a full accessibility audit means that we have to measure ramps to make sure they are the right grade. You have to do the flow of path, the flow of travel from the parking lot all the way through the whole voting room. And so like I said, if you're really doing the full assessment where you get out there and you're testing the weight on the doors. And so ideally, nothing has changed in our facilities. We, and how we used to do our accessibility checklist is anytime we went into a new location, we would do a full accessibility checklist. But we're assuming that DES hasn't torn up a ramp in between March and June. But the way, like I said, the way these regulations were written is they, they're expecting an audit every year now.
Okay, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask, is it required that it be done by your team? Or could it be either outsourced or a building inspector that supports you in that?
It's, so this is once, so it's tasked to the electoral board, who then has delegated it to us, so.
So again, I'd say, don't be bashful about what you need. We do have building inspectors and others in contracts that might be able to support you.
So it's also, we have 30, more than 30 of our polling places are in Arlington Public Schools, which, like I said, obviously getting access to the inside of these locations, especially whilst schools in session, is challenging. Which is why our hope is to be able to leverage some of our election workers during the June primary, when it might, there might be some slow times during the day to get them to help with some of these assessment pieces. So that's what we had to do last year, so.
Interesting, all right. Seems like it ought to be an easier way to do it, but this, the way it is.
It's, I think we can all agree that we want to make sure our polling, every part of the election process is as accessible as possible. So any voters who do have any mobility challenges, and this can be as anything from like a dodgy hip, we want to make sure, especially if they're having to stand in line for a long time, or just the sheer, even our building, that long walk down the hallway can be really daunting for some of our voters. So there are things like, we have two wheelchairs now in this building so that when we encounter these voters, we can put them in a wheelchair, try to get them to use a wheelchair so that we can at least get them from the back to their car as safely as possible, so.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Any other questions? Are we all, all right, thank you. I think we're even ending on time?
Six o'clock on the dot. I'm so impressed.
I'm impressed with you two.
Before, I know you have one other, you have one other item of business, but I did want to take two minutes of privilege to give you information on mid-year.
Okay, that's fine. We won't do six, but as far as you're concerned, you're done. Thank you so very much. And Tak, Mr. Takas, I know you have something too. Yep.
So I will hand out to you two documents when I finish speaking. One is the multi-year forecast, which I know you all paid close attention, is a blank page in the budget. We actually have a six-year forecast and I will hand the copy of that out. And so you will have an opportunity to look at that. The other item, which I told you I was going to hand to you today, is at this time of the year, traditionally, we will go back and take a look at where we are in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2024. Okay, so we are more than halfway through fiscal 2024. At the time, we prepared the budget back in December, January. We had a series of pieces of information. We've learned more about where we are in 2024. I will cut to the chase on this and let you know that when you're done reading the memo, you will see that we have additional revenue that is, that we're estimating is available in fiscal '24. Revenue plus a small amount of expense savings that will amount to 26.4 million for the county board. Now that includes the 1.3 million that we left unallocated in our proposal back in February. And just so, that is a large number, so I can explain what's going on. Part of that, a little bit over 7.5 million, is from additional tax revenue. So we continue to do well, and you'll see in the memo, about tax receipts, whether it's sales tax or transient occupancy tax. And that amount will be shared with the schools. So the schools is going to be getting 6.6 million. The superintendent knows that. But the bigger chunk of money that we're getting that makes up most of what we have is non-tax revenue, which is not shared with the schools. So that's interest, interest income on our portfolio, which varies somewhere between 600 million and a billion, depending what's going on on a given day. And then also, and you can have a separate work session if you want on this, on unrealized gains under the Government Accounting Standard Board, GASB, what was it?
What number?
What number? GASB 86, whatever it is, which has been the bane of our existence. But we set aside a big chunk of money and as we have not realized those losses, that money then becomes available. So it was something we've talked about, but I'll give you that memo and that will be available to you. The other thing is, at the end of this week, I also will update you on where we are on our estimates about how fiscal '25 will do. Because some of this will ripple into that. Now, the money I'm putting on the table today is one-time money. Now, if there's additional money available at the end of this week, and I want to let everybody know, that is also, that will be ongoing money and will have a small one-time component with it. I can only tell you this, because I haven't been fully briefed on it. It will not be anywhere near this amount of money. It's likely to be a lot, lot less than that. But we have shared that with the schools, so I will hand this out to you. It's also posted on our website as of 6 o'clock tonight. And with that concludes my presentation.
Wow, perfect timing. Thank you very much. And colleagues, just before we close our work session, I think, Mr. Karantopoulos, you have a motion that you would like to make for us.
I have a motion to make, an action that can be taken in a meeting like that and doesn't need further, you know, announcement. This is an appointment. The motion is, my motion is to appoint Diane Kresh to the Board of Directors of Arlington Independent Media for a term ending on March 31st, 2027. That's a three-year term. Thank you. This is a, is to fill the vacancy left by Brenna Helfer when she left the service.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion has been moved and seconded, seeing no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much, colleagues. All right, we will be back here in the boardroom at 7:00 PM for our budget public hearing. For those watching, speakers, sign up for tonight's public hearing is available online at the usual www.arlingtonva.us. And it's here on the third floor atrium at 2100 Clarendon Boulevard. In person is available, sign up until 7:00. Next budget work session is Thursday, April 4th at 3:00 PM, which will be followed by, that's this Thursday, followed by the public hearing on tax rates and fees. We are now adjourned and colleagues, see you back here at 7:00.